Good evening, everyone. I'm calling the City of Santa Clara Special Meeting to Order. So, we are going to start with roll call, Assistant City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I do roll call, Mayor, there's something I need to read into the record.
Okay.
The City Clerk's Office has updated the agenda in light of ADA compliance language being inadvertently left off yesterday's agenda. Tonight's special meeting agenda includes disclosure language to allow for requests for reasonable accommodations and compliance with the ADA. The agenda was posted last night at 7:30 PM on the City Hall's Brown Act Board on the website and was also disseminated throughout the various social media outlets and the city libraries. In addition, the technical issues we experienced with the city's website and the public speaking issues were separate. The website is hosted by a vendor who had technical difficulties which we have been informed impacted multiple agencies. It was not unique to the City of Santa Clara. The vendor has since resolved the issues and the city's website services have been restored to normal. In terms of the public speaking issues, these have all, these have also been resolved for this evening's meeting. Unfortunately, all of these occurrences happened at once which resulted in multiple issues with the meeting last night. We apologize for the inconvenience and frustration that this has caused the City Council and the residents of the City of Santa Clara. The City Clerk's Office is committed to the city and its residents and strives to keep the public informed of matters coming before the City Council. Thank you. And with that, I will proceed with roll call.
Thank you.
Councilmember Watanabe.
Present.
Councilmember Shahal.
Present.
Councilmember Hardy, I mean Vice Mayor Hardy.
No problem, present.
Councilmember Park.
Here.
Councilmember Jane.
Here.
Councilmember Becker.
Here.
And Mayor Gilmore.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, next, we, first of all, thank you, City Clerk, for that. I know we had a lot of challenges yesterday, a lot of technical challenges. And I know that your office and our communications team did the best they could to do what's best for us. So, I'm glad we're redoing the meeting this evening so that everyone has a chance to, and the public has a chance to weigh in on all the issues they do want to weigh in on. So, thank you very much for your hard work over the last 24 hours. So, first of all, okay, we're going to closed session. We have two items on in closed session. But first, I'm going to ask for public comment on any item that's on the closed session agenda. So, I'm going to start with Ben Dover, if you'd like to give us your public comment. You're muted, Ben. There you go.
Hey, all I could, all I could say is smoke them if you got them.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you very much. Next, we have Teresa O. Welcome, Teresa O. You're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. I, it certainly was not my intention to be coming and speaking at City Council meetings this timeframe. So, shortly after my, my departure from the council. But I've been observing some things the last couple of weeks, the meetings which have raised a lot of concerns for myself and particularly in light of some of the comments that I made at the meeting. And I've heard a lot of talk about transparency during the campaign. And what I've witnessed the last couple of weeks raises grave concerns for me about the actual commitment to that. And so, based on what I was hearing yesterday in the discussion before the council went into closed session, I would like to have each council member, each council member, tell the members of the Santa Clara community whether you have participated in a meeting in any form with any attorney representing the plaintiffs in the CVRA lawsuit, which we all know is scheduled to go to a court hearing tomorrow. I think the members of this community deserve to know that. And if you have been a sitting council member, I'm sure hope that those meetings, if they occurred, have been on your calendar. As you all know, Councilmember Davis and myself and the mayor worked on bringing the lobbyist ordinance, the calendaring ordinance, dark money ordinance, all those things to Santa Clara in the interest of transparency. And secondly, I'd act, I'd like to ask specifically Councilmember Kevin Park. I was told by a member of the public that Kevin had been approached some time ago by Robert Rubin, the lead counsel for the plaintiff's lawsuit, with the interest of him becoming the lead plaintiff. And I'd like to ask him if he could confirm tonight that rumor. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack Emos.
Hello. I just wanted to ask, I'm from Portland, Oregon. I wanted to ask your views on mushrooms, medical mushrooms, specifically the legalization in California. Is that going to happen?
Are you finished with your comments? We don't answer them, but it's not on the topic of our closed session this evening. Thank you for calling them. All right, Cliff Digum.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, hi, I'm Cliff Digum. I'm from Santa Clara. I, I just wanted to say, I mean, you know, you have a comment section here, and I think that's all well and good. But the big problem is, I mean, if you can't answer our questions, how are we going to get anything done here in the City of Santa Clara? That's, that's, and I would say, Lisa, that's my question for you, but that's my comment for you. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is a comment section for items that are on closed session. We do have a public presentation session, section on the regular agenda that gives you a little bit more time. So, maybe you want to dial in on that section. Would, are there any other comments for closed session before we adjourn to closed session?
Madam Mayor, I'm just going to request that we continue the first item, 20-1343, about Nevariz versus the City of Santa Clara to the January 12th meeting.
Do we do that in, in now?
I think you can do it now. It's just so people know that, that we're not going to even be talking about that. I think it's best.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to continue?
Yes, I move to continue, item 20-1343.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Assistant City Clerk.
Councilmember Watanabe.
Yes.
Councilmember Shahal.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hardy.
Yes.
Councilmember Park.
Yes.
Councilmember Jane.
Yes.
Councilmember Becker.
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore.
Yes.
Thank you.
And that passes unanimously. I see that we have another public person that would like to speak. Wesley Mukuyama happens to be the plaintiff in the case we're going to talk about. Mr. Mukuyama? You're, you're muted, sir.
I just wanted to ask a question. So, you're going in the closed session. Are you going to have an open session at all? Is this just, is this the end of the open session?
No.
Something after the closed session tonight?
We have a whole long, a meeting this evening of many, many items on open session. After closed, we'll adjourn back to open session.
Oh, and what time will that start, do you know?
Not, no, hopefully very soon, not like yesterday. Hopefully, we'll be out in, in a reasonable amount of time.
Okay, so if I come back, I hold on to this and you, for an hour, you, I hope you will come back. Thank you. Thank you for the information. That's all.
Thank you very much. And I think there was a request from former Councilmember O'Neil about disclosures. And I, I for one will volunteer my disclosure that I have not had any on the CVRA, if I have not had any discussions or meetings or anything with the plaintiffs or their attorneys. So, it's up to the council if they want to disclose, but I wanted to make my disclosures regarding this case.
Mayor Gilmore.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hardy and Councilmember Watanabe and Councilmember Park has raised their hand.
Okay, I have another member of the public. Can I go there first?
Yes.
Okay, and I, I think I've already spoken, letting Mr. Dover speak. I'm sure I have, right?
Yes.
Shalini Venkatesh. Shalini, if you'd like to make your comments, and you're muted. There, there you go. Go ahead.
Hi, I just wanted to say, I wanted to check the item that's being postponed or continued. I think you said it was 1343, and I think that's a mistake. I think the number probably you meant is 1347. I just want to check.
Okay, it's, it's, it's 20-1343 on closed session.
Just on closed.
And then, for clarification, in the open session, there's an item that's suggested for continuance, and that's 1347. So, we'll get to that one shortly. Thank you for, thank you. Okay, back to council now. Hold on, please. Can you call the first council member while I try to figure out how to get there?
Councilmember Watanabe.
There you go, Councilmember Watanabe.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Simran. Yes, and thank you for the question, Honorable Teresa O'Neil. Yes, I'm happy to answer the question and state that I have not spoken with plaintiff's attorney, had meetings with plaintiff's attorney. And I would definitely have, if I had, would have disclosed it on my public calendar for everybody to see. So, thank you again for the question.
Okay, then we have Councilmember Park.
So, yeah, thank you for the question. I know a lot of people have had the same question. I will try to answer the questions, I believe, Ms. O'Neil asked in order, which is one. I was approached after the 2014 election by Robert Rubin asking if I would, you know, be interested in participating in, in what would eventually become a lawsuit. My answer was, I was not interested at the time. I've not expressed interest since. My other, my other interactions with Robert Rubin have been seeing him at the CVRA trial. I asked him several questions about the trial itself, nothing about anything personal. And last night, I received a call simply telling me that there was something, there was information that could possibly be of a timely nature that I should ask about. And again, nobody told me I should vote one way or the other. I did not have any other discussions other than that. It was a note telling me, it was a phone call telling me, there is potentially an item, there is potentially information that the city has received that would be of a timely nature that I should address. And so, I simply brought that up to the council. I have no, had no other discussions outside of, of that. Thank you.
All right, Vice Mayor Hardy.
I'd like to disclose, I have had no dealings whatsoever with the attorney for this case at all.
Okay, Councilmember Chahal.
Thank you, Mayor. I had never had a meeting, any meeting with the plaintiffs, but I did receive last Thursday a call from Attorney Robin. And he wanted to confirm that I got the settlement offer. And I told him that the offer should be directed to our attorney or the outside counsel, and they will get it to us. And I told that ethically and procedurally, I cannot discuss anything related to the case. It has to be discussed in closed door with full counsel. So, and that was my discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Becker.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, I, I was contacted by Robert Rubin. He called me, I guess, about five or six times on my phone. I never answered. And then, finally, when I actually answered the phone, that's when he revealed who he was. I then said that I cannot speak to him. He then asked me again if I received a letter. I said, I cannot speak to you, and then I hung up the phone.
Thank you. Councilmember Watanabe.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I find these answers that, council members that have been contacted by Mr. Rubin very interesting. And I would like to know how he obtained their either personal cell phones or, or, or city cellphone numbers to be able to contact them. And so, I have that question. Thank you.
Councilmember Jane.
Yeah, years ago, May, before 2016, I was contacted about being a plaintiff for a CVRA lawsuit, and I declined. And I had not heard from Robert Rubin since two days ago when he called me and asked me if I had seen a settlement letter. And I said I had not. I guess he expected that the city attorney would have shared that with me. And I did not get any details about a settlement, but I just said I had not received one. Thank you.
Councilmember Park.
I wanted to answer the question about how people get my number, which is, my number's been public. It's been posted on my website. It's posted everywhere. It's a pretty public number.
Okay, I thought the question was attorneys or plaintiffs, so I answered the question. I haven't spoken to either the attorneys or the plaintiffs. And so, I guess people answered it the way they wanted to. Councilmember Becker, followed by Chahal.
Also, my phone number is put on, was put on my campaign website, so everybody has my phone number. At the same time, to divulge information during the election, when I was running for City Council, I was supported by a plaintiff, Wesley Mukuyama. And that does not have any standing on my campaign or as, as a council member.
Councilmember Chahal.
Madam Mayor, I'm not sure how they got my phone, but my phone has been in on my campaigns. And so, that's a good question for the council attorney to answer, basically.
Okay, anything else from anyone? All right, we are now going.
Mayor.
Yes.
City Clerk Hassan Haggad would like to speak.
Yes, City Clerk, go ahead.
Hey, I, I would like to remind council members of confidentiality requirements, even in some of the comments that were just made around things that are confidential that may have been spoken in closed session that the public may not know about that should still remain confidential at the moment. So, a friendly reminder to all council members for items that are confidential to not be discussed in, in, in public until the city attorney has reported out what may or may not have occurred.
Thank you, City Clerk. We appreciate that. Councilmember Watanabe.
Thank you, Mayor. Hopefully, this is my last question. But based on a statement that you just made, I would like to ask whether or not any of the council members or there, are there any council members that have had interactions or communications with the plaintiffs? That being Wesley Mukuyama or anybody that's named in the lawsuit. Thank you.
If any council member would like to answer that, now's your time. Councilmember Park, followed by Becker.
I've also was, been supported by Wesley Mukuyama. I've had conversations with Wes at events where he's supported our campaigns, but I have not had any personal, personal dealings or any kind of, you know, personal meetings with, with Wes about any city matters. Thank you.
Councilmember Becker.
So, reiterating, I was supported by Wesley Mukuyama during the campaign. He actually lives in my district. Since I've won office, since I've won the election, I have not communicated with him because I am worried about this situation that we're in right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Jane.
I was in several meetings with Wes Mukuyama about, it was clear that I did not support Measure C. And so, we had discussions about defeating Measure C.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Chahal.
I can declare, I never had any personal meetings with Wes and whatever meetings had been during the campaign trail in a public setting, and they were not personal meeting, just a gathering. Thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Watanabe, followed by Vice Mayor Hardy.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I have an additional question. I would like to ask the council members whether or not they have had, they have talked to the 49ers about this case. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Hardy.
I'm trying, I'm looking through my thing. I don't have the plaintiff's phone number. It seems to me he texted me once a while ago, I guess during Measure C, and he did send a text or email or something, but when I saw what it, who it was and that it was a bunch of people, I didn't open it. And I have not talked to anybody about this outside of council.
Thank you. Councilmember Park, followed by Jane.
So, I did receive a congratulatory message from the 49ers, but we have not discussed any, anything about any council actions.
Councilmember Jane, followed by Becker.
Exactly the same in my case. I got a congratulatory phone call from Rahul Chanduk, not Jed York. And I, we did not discuss anything but a congratulatory message.
Councilmember Becker, followed by Chahal.
I was contacted by the 49ers after my victory for congratulations. They wanted to set up a meeting sometime soon, and I haven't agreed to it.
Thank you. Councilmember Chahal.
No discussion with 49ers on this CVRA lawsuit.
Councilmember Watanabe.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to disclose that I have not had any communications, nor did I receive a congratulatory message from the 49ers. Thank you.
Sorry about that, Kathy. Yeah, and I, I have not spoken to any of them. All right, thank you. I think now we are going to adjourn to closed session. Thank you. We'll be back.
Hey Mayor, we're ready on this side.
Okay, so are we on now?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Welcome everyone to our City Council's special meeting. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a Statement of Values?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A Statement of Values, Councilmember Watson-Abby?
Yes, thank you Mayor. As we gather, we humbly seek blessings upon this meeting. May we act with strength, courage, and will to perform our obligations and duties to our people with justice to all. Let us seek wisdom so that we may act in the best interest of our people, our neighbors, and our country. All this we ask so we may serve our community with fairness and respect, putting their needs before all.
Thank you, please be seated everyone. Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, our Assistant City Clerk.
AB 23 announcement. Members of the Santa Clara Stadium Authority, Sports and Open Space Authority, and Housing Authority are entitled to receive thirty dollars for each attended meeting. Statement of Behavioral Standards. The city of Santa Clara has adopted a code of ethics and values and behavioral standards for public meetings to promote and maintain the highest levels of conduct. This includes mutual respect, robust discussion, and allowing city business to be done in an efficient and consistent manner. Please note that as the presiding officer, the mayor's direction in matters of process and decorum should be followed, and that use of the gavel indicates all conversations must conclude, and everyone in attendance should come to order and attention. Welcome and thank you for your participation.
Thank you Assistant City Clerk. Next, we have reports of action taken in closed session. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you Mayor. Council took no reportable action in closed session.
Thank you. Continuances and exceptions reconsideration. We have one item. Public hearing, action on the consideration of the nomination of the Pomeroy Green Townhouses at the northeast corner of Pomeroy Avenue and Benton Street to the National Register of Historic Places. So there's a request to continue the consideration of this item to note January 12th, 2021. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I also have a, I have some continuance.
Well, let's, let's finish this one first.
Okay.
One at a time. Okay, is there a motion to continue this to January 12th, 2021?
Motion to continue to January 12th, 2021.
Second.
Thank you Councilmember Watson-Abby, second by Councilmember Jane. Any discussion on this from any public members? Alright.
We, uh, Mayor?
Yes.
Wes has his hand raised. Do you want to, oh, he lowered it now.
Not for this item probably. Um, Assistant City Clerk, a roll call please.
Councilmember Watson-Abby?
Yes.
Councilmember Shahal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Councilmember Park?
Yes.
Councilmember Jane?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. So who's first? City Attorney, City Manager?
I have, um, I have a couple of items here. And I may be covering the same items that the City Attorney also wanted to make sure were continued. I'd like to request that item three T, three, three, three T like Tom, three B B, and three C C get continued to January 12th, and that is because consideration and passage of ordinances needs to be done in a regular meeting, and tonight's meeting is a special meeting. I'd also like to request that item three J J be continued to January 12th as well.
Okay, can I just go over those three T and I'll, I'll explain what those items are for the public?
Sure.
Three B B, three C C, and three J J?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be item three T is, and I know we've had a lot of response from, from the public on this one. Action on the adoption of an ordinance number 2023, adding chapter 9.65 to the city code to provide hotel service workers retention rights. So that would be continued until January 12th. Three B B, action on ord, adoption of ordinance number 2025, amending the transit neighborhood zoning district and zoning district applicable to the Tasman East specific plan area boundaries to allow certain non-residential uses within the first three floors of mixed-use buildings, and to correct an error regarding permissible density ranges. That, and then three C C is adoption of ordinance number 2026, adding section seventeen point fifteen point three point zero to chapter fifteen of title seventeen of the Santa Clara City Code regarding the Tasman East specific plan infrastructure fee. And what was the last one? Three J J?
Yes.
That is action on resolution amending rate schedules for electric service for all classes of customers effective January 1st, 2021. And the reason being that these need to be adopted at a regular scheduled, regularly scheduled meeting and not a special meeting. Is there a motion to continue those items until, at, at, same date, January 12th?
12th, yes.
Twenty twenty.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, so, motion by Councilmember Becker, second by Councilmember Jane. Any discussion on this, Councilmember Shahal?
No. Madam Mayor, I wanted to second that and also have some items to be pulled out. Not on this item, yeah.
Okay, so these are to, to continue?
Yes, I'm moving that.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second. Do we have any public members that would like to say anything about this?
No members of the public have their hand raised.
Thank you. So Assistant City Clerk?
Councilmember Watson-Abby?
Yes.
Councilmember Shahal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Councilmember Park?
Yes.
Councilmember Jane?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
And Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember Shahal, did you have a continuance or an exception or?
Sorry, Mayor, I just wanted to pull some from the consent calendar. I'll, I can come back to that.
When we get there, we'll, I'll call on you. Alright, next, we're gonna go for, and people may have seen this before, but item two A, adoption of, oh, I'm sorry, City Attorney, did you have some, anything else you'd like to pull? Or for continuance, I'm sorry?
No, no, the, the, the City Manager was, got the items that I, I thought I was gonna pull, but that's fine. Everything's covered.
Thank you. So item two A, adoption of a resolution declaring the results of the canvas of return to the consolidated municipal election held on November 3rd, 2020, with the statewide presidential election, and we're just reaffirming this. So may I ask the City Attorney, is it the four previous members of the council only that vote on this?
Or can? I, 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 I don't think it matters. I, I think, I think the entire council can vote on it.
Okay, very good. So, may I have a motion or, Councilmember Becker, did you want to say something or would you like to make a motion?
I was gonna make a motion, but at the same time, I was just concerned that we, myself, Councilmember Jane, and Councilmember Park would have had to recuse ourselves. So I'll second it if we didn't have to.
I'd like to make the motion. I think it's most appropriate if I do that.
Yeah.
Motion by Vice Mayor Hardy, second by Councilmember Becker?
Yeah.
Shahal.
Okay, and, okay, now, Councilmember Becker, did you want to say something? Your hands up.
I'm sorry about that.
Hands up, did you want to say something? Vice Mayor Hardy? Okay, okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? We have attendees, okay. Wesley Mokayama, would you like to say something on this item? You're muted. Wesley, you're muted.
I don't, uh, I don't know if this pertains to this motion, but before this, the open session ended, my name was mentioned. And I want to say, make it clear that I never contacted any of the council members about, uh, the appeal.
Okay.
Brian Doyle is, I've never contacted, I don't, and I didn't know anything about this, but I will say this.
It's on, on this item, please, Mr. Mokayama, about the results of the election?
I will, I would like to address the, the motion for the appeal, or if there is one.
No, no, it's, that, it's not on this item.
But just make it clear that I never.
Public, if you'd like to.
Okay.
Okay.
Never contacted anyone, so.
Thank you very much. Uh, going back to council? I see a hand, but I'm not seeing who it is. Hold on.
Councilmember Park.
Okay, Councilmember Park?
Yeah, I just want to clarify to the public that this is just a reaffirmation of the results, and there would be no problem with, again, I think, Councilmember Becker, Councilmember Jane, myself, or even Councilmember Watson-Abby voting on this, this action.
Right, I, I confirm that with the City Attorney. So we have a motion and a second. Assistant City Clerk?
Councilmember Watson-Abby?
Yes.
Councilmember Shahal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Councilmember Park?
Yes.
Councilmember Jane?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, we have action on December 8th. City Council and Authorities concurrent meeting approve the minutes of December 8th, 2020. Do you have a motion to approve? Minutes of December?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Park, second by Councilmember Watson-Abby. Any discussion on this from any member of the public? Okay, Assistant City Clerk?
Councilmember Watson-Abby?
Yes.
Councilmember Shahal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Councilmember Park?
Yes.
Councilmember Jane?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, we're gonna move on from, for, move on to a verbal report from the City Manager regarding the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you Mayor and City Council. I'm gonna keep this very brief, given the hour, and I will hand off to Lisa Schonthal to provide additional details. But once again, this status update on the state of COVID-19 emergency is provided for council review per Government Code Section 8630. I just want to state that Santa Clara continues to experience new record-breaking surges of COVID-19 of cases in hospital as evidenced today by the state of California, who confirmed that we are now required to stay at home under their, the state requirements. If you recall, the county had accelerated that order, but that our ICU availability has fallen below thirteen percent at twelve point nine percent, and the stay-at-home order per the state guidelines is through January 7th. And so I'm gonna pass it over to Lisa for a quick recap of our numbers. Thank you.
Thank you City Manager Santana. Good evening Mayor Gilmore and Councilmembers. This is Lisa Schonthal. So yes, as City Manager Santana shared, the Bay Area region's ICU capacity fell to twelve point nine percent today. So it is now not just our county and the few other counties that began the stay-at-home order early. It is now the entire Bay Area that will have to enter the stay-at-home order effective tomorrow at 11:59 PM. And just yesterday, the Bay Area's region ICU capacity was at fifteen point eight percent. So that is, that is a drop. So the information I have to share is very sobering. There were two grim reports presented yesterday at the state and county levels. From the state, it was the Governor and Cabinet Secretary of Health and Human Services, Dr. Mark Galley, who spoke at a press conference. The county report to the Board of Supervisors included Health Officer Dr. Sarah Cody and the county's COVID-19 Director of Healthcare Preparedness, Dr. Ahmad Kamal. You've heard me reference both of these individuals. I'm just gonna provide an overview, a few highlights from those reports. Dr. Cody stated COVID is out of control locally. In the past month, our case rates have tripled and the positivity rate has doubled. Last week, I stated the low number of available ICU beds was a very significant metric. It's one metric, but it indicates how very stretched the healthcare system is. The percentage of available ICU beds today in our county is twelve percent. This is forty available ICU, ICU beds countywide. So that might sound like an improvement, because last Tuesday, we were at nine point five percent or thirty-one beds available countywide. But that, that slight increase in beds has come at an extreme cost. It, it does not represent an improvement in our healthcare service delivery. To increase search capacity, hospitals have canceled elective surgeries that are needed. So these surgeries include heart valve replacements, cancer surgeries, and kidney transplants. So now hospitals have made very difficult decisions and will need to continue to do so. We can predict that. They are telling patients who need surgery that they are deferring care. Dr. Kamal stated our hospitals are in extreme crisis. As of today, the latest COVID case numbers reported by Santa Clara County reflect a cumulative total of fifty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-three cases in the county, five hundred and sixty-one deaths, and two thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven cases in the city of Santa Clara. This includes nine hundred and forty-three new cases in the county, which is actually lower than it's been in many days. Twenty-three new cases in the city from the previous day. Yesterday, we had one thousand, one hundred and eighteen new cases. The day before, it was one thousand, two hundred and twenty-one. The day before that, two thousand, fifty-five new cases, and yesterday, we had twenty-four deaths, which was also a new record. We keep breaking our records. Today, the additional deaths were at eight. We know these high case numbers will result in even more hospitalizations that will stretch our hospitals and healthcare workers even further in two weeks. The state continues to look at various ways to support medical surge statewide. Staffing waivers have been provided. You know, for example, the ratio of ICU nurses to patients is now one nurse to three patients instead of one nurse to two patients. Federal Disaster Medical Assistance Team members have already been deployed to the state, and California Medical Assistance Teams, or CALBATS, have been deployed. So the staffing augmentation is not adequate to keep up with the demand for patient treatment. The state requested additional medical personnel from the Department of Defense as well as international mutual aid. There are eleven alternate care sites being prepared statewide, but these sites are not equipped to treat high acuity patients. The state has purchased five thousand additional body bags and has activated the state's mass fatality program, which includes sixty fifty-three-foot refrigerated storage units that are standing by in counties and at hospitals to serve as portable morgues. So we do have hope for the future with the vaccines. Vaccines, the very first vaccines arrived in the county yesterday morning. Just over five thousand arrived yesterday morning to begin vaccinating our healthcare workers, and then nursing home residents will also be vaccinated. But the next forty-five to sixty days, it's just a very, very crucial time. So if you could please bring up just the one slide that I have to show. It, it's very difficult for me to, to give such sobering news without offering something more. So the holidays can be a painful time for many without COVID, and, and this year is very, very difficult for our community. We want the public to be aware of free crisis support for the reasons shown. This is not the slide. It's a, it's a different slide. It's a different slide that talks about various, uh, types of support, free crisis support that, um, is offered, and I'll just talk about that, it would be the next slide. The public is able to text, here it is, thank you very much, 741-741. Uh, to that number, they can text the word home, H-O-M-E, uh, and the cities, the cities' Emergence Operations Center actually tested this service the other day, uh, so we could validate that, that it is functional, and a crisis counselor did respond to the text, we opted out at that point, but we just want the public to know, um, because we are aware that depression, anxiety, isolation, uh, everything that would be reasonable for our community to experience at this time, given the circumstances, that there is help available as the slide indicates. So this, this concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Lisa. City Manager, do you have any additional comments? I think the, the, the numbers are
Do not.
staggering and, and just frankly awful and scary. Um, so we, we all need to do our part, because this is so, so serious for our community. People are dying, people are getting sick. Wear your masks, stay away from people, stay at home. It's that, that important. Lisa, do we have any idea in terms of the vaccinations? I know there was, uh, in a certain amount that came into the county. What can our public expect in terms of timing when the gen, they will be available for the general public? I know there's a list of, uh, priorities and those most in need come first, of course.
Yes. So, oh, thank you for that question, Mayor Gilmore. Uh, there has been various timeframes given. Uh, the, the United States Secretary of Health and Human Services, Alex Azar, um, on Monday stated that be, because the federal government's, uh, timeline has been accelerated, he stated that he believed the general public would be able to get the vaccine, uh, by March. Uh, other timeframes that have been articulated are later than that, April, May, for example. Um, it's, it's hard to tell, you know, with, with great certainty, um, but I would say it would not be reasonable to expect the general public would be vaccinated by, by February, um, or would even begin to be vaccinated by Feb, February. Um, I can offer that, you know, that this first, uh, these first tiers that we're getting in the county, you know, it's 17,550 doses of the Pfizer vaccine this week. Uh, next week, we anticipate, once, um, the Moderna vaccination, vaccine is approved, we're going to be getting additional 39,000 doses. We have approximately 130,000 healthcare workers in Santa Clara County, but vaccinating our, our nursing home residents, uh, is going to help our overall case rate and our hospitalizations, and they are part of the first tier, uh, because they do occupy, um, a, a percentage of our hospital beds. So that, that will provide some, some help for, for the community.
And when you say 39,000, but each, each person needs two sho, two shots, correct? So?
Yes, so these first doses that are coming are the, the first of two doses that will be administered.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, and, um, red, uh, uh, two more questions. One is that the current health order, I think, goes through December 21st?
The current stay-at-home order, um, today, it, it, today, because of the state now implementing this across the Bay Area region, it's anticipated through at least January 7th. The order that was, yeah, that was issued early, um, by our county and five other jurisdictions went through January 4th.
Went through January 4th, okay, okay. And then, um, do we know when there's going to be another testing facility coming back to Santa Clara?
Uh, next Wednesday, December 23rd, um, from 9:30 AM to 4:00 PM.
Wednesday, December, so next, uh, oh, Wednesday, December 23rd?
Yes.
Where will that be?
At the Central Park Library.
Okay, 9:30 to 4:00 PM?
9:30 to 4:00 PM, yes. Yes, people can go to SCCFreeTest.org, uh, and now people can register seven days in advance, so SCC SCCFreeTest.org.
We put that on our website so that, because I'll tell you, and I, I did it, not the last time, but the time before, that they were there, it's very easy, you make an appointment, you know, you're, you're in and out fairly quickly, you don't touch anything, you're not near anyone, and they do it fast and it doesn't hurt. So, and you get your results, you know, fairly quickly, so I, I think, uh, um, it's really important that people, if you, you know, need to get tested, it's, it's a very convenient place at Central Park Library to get tested. All right, thank you, thank you, Lisa, appreciate that. Uh, Councilmember Watanabe?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, yes, I would also add, uh, that, um, I mean, I appreciate the fact that people can, uh, register for the test, uh, seven days in advance, and I recommend that people do so, because at the, the last opportunity at the library, I went to sign up, I think, uh, like la, the Friday, Thursday or Friday, and the slots were already filled, so, um, don't wait until the last minute, sign up as soon as possible, if you know you want to take the test, sign up as soon as, uh, as it becomes available, so online tonight, um, and, and sign up. Uh, I just, um, thank you, Lisa, um, for the report, I know it is very sobering and it's very, very hard to hear, um, and I appreciate you sharing the information about, um, uh, the number that people can contact to just outreach and, and talk about, uh, you know, what's going on in their lives, because yes, I, I hear a lot about, um, you know, people are, are concerned about, um, people's just mental health, uh, and, uh, so it's very important to have somebody to talk to, so thank you so much for sharing that, um, information. Um, I, I just, I also wanted to add, well, uh, the residents from John Burns, uh, senior residents, which is here in my district, actually, have already reached out to me, uh, saying, could you please do whatever you can to get us on the list and, uh, to make us, to get us, um, o, on the list to get the vaccinations as soon as they're available? So I said, I'll do whatever I can, but, so, uh, so they're already concerned and, and they, they want to get on the list. But, uh, the last thing I did want to say is, uh, I was at the, um, Recycling and Waste Reduction, uh, Commission meeting this evening, and, uh, sup, County Supervisor, uh, Mike Wasserman is also on that commission, and he, uh, announced at the end of the meeting that the first, uh, vaccinations were administered at Palo Alto, um, VA, uh, Hospital today. He didn't say how many, but, um, it was just very encouraging to know that here in Santa Clara County, that the, um, the shots are, uh, are, the vaccinations are, are being administered, and, um, uh, hopefully we'll get some more information from, uh, the Board of County Supervisors, um, to follow up on that and, and who exactly received, uh, the vaccinations, uh, et cetera. So that's all I have to add, but again, thank you for all the information.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Park?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, uh, Santa Clara residents who need PPE, meaning masks, uh, clock masks, face shields, um, the Santa Clara, uh, Community Coalition that Habir Batia put together also has a, a, uh, sorry, my, dealing with my daughter, I, has a source of, of masks and, and face shields, uh, that, that residents can request. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, all right, thank you so much, we appreciate it. Uh, let's see if I have a comment from the, uh, Wes Mukyama, are you commenting on this COVID report? Would you like to comment on this? Are you waiting for public presentations?
I, I'm, I just want to say that I'm, I am a, uh, member of the Santa Clara County Behavioral Health Board and been following this for, over, uh, since the COVID began. I do, yeah, I, I've been advocating for collaboration between, uh, behavioral health and, uh, public health and other agencies to come together for a summit to talk about what they can do, especially dealing with the vulnerable populations, and I, I think after the frontline workers and essential workers, uh, and field workers and, and people that are undocumented, elderly in the nursing homes, after them, I think, uh, uh, these vulnerable populations should be, uh, either vaccinated and tested, and they should be, as particularly, they should have an answer for undocumented, uh, uh, populations who will not come in to get a test, so, um, it, this is a very serious, um, illness and, and we really have to attack it as much as we can through, through outreach, getting people to get tested and vaccinated as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. All right, um, thank you very much for that report, so we're going to move on now. Um, uh, City Manager, do we have the new Chief Executive Officer of the DMO this evening, or it says to be rescheduled to January?
Yeah, we'll be rescheduling him and putting that on the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, so you don't do anything there. Okay, next, we have the consent calendar, and all items are approved with, uh, one motion, unless there's items to pull from the consent calendar. Councilmember Becker?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, I'd like to pull item 3R.
Okay, let me see what 3R is, so I can tell the public. 3R is action on final map for tract 10528 at 1834, Circle 90, North Winchester Boulevard, we'll pull that for discussion, is there anything else? Councilmember Becker, is that it?
That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Watanabe?
The only item I have is 3D. On the police, the police report on the boat, car break-ins and burglary.
Car break-ins, okay, 3D, which is, there's probably a lot of interest in that. Um, wait.
It's item 3H, Mayor?
Three, what is it, 3?
3H.
Well, that's close to 3D, okay. 3H, information report regarding automobile burglaries, including strategies for prevention. Anything else, Councilmember Watanabe?
I have nothing else, thank you.
That it? Okay, uh, Councilmember Jaal?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I would like to pull item 3F as Frank, and 3II, and 3H has already been pulled, I would have liked to pull that one too.
3F, okay, so 3F is action on small cell attachment agreement between the city of Santa Clara and New Singular Wireless PCS LLC. And 3II is, hold on, getting there, very, very long consent calendar, okay, action on poll contact agreement with Zayo Group LLC. And, um, okay, anybody else? Councilmember Jane?
Yes, um, I would like to move to, uh, approve the balance of the consent calendar, but I would like to note that I must recuse myself of 3G and 3KK, which are two Mills Act homes, because my home was, is within 500 feet of those two homes.
Second. So approval and second, um, I'm looking for, because I didn't write it down ahead of time, the item where we're appointing the, um, Downtown Task Force people, is that in the consent calendar? Can someone help me? Sorry, I should have done this ahead of time.
Yes, that is, it's in the consent calendar, I saw it.
Where is it?
It's
Somebody, um, hold on, oh, we'll find it.
3V.
3V, 3 Victor.
Yeah, that's right, it's 3.
3V Victor, okay. I will be abstaining on item 3V Victor, action on appointment to fill two vacant positions on the Downtown Precise Plan Downtown Community Task Force, because my office is located, um, in the task, in the, um, Downtown, uh, Precise Plan area. So I'll be abstaining on that item for the record, Assistant City Clerk. Okay, so, uh, we have pulled for discussion 3R, 3H, 3F, and 3II. Everything else is approved, noting the abstentions from Councilmember Jane and myself. Uh, any other from the audience? Wes Mukyama, your, your hand, okay, uh, is now down. Okay, um, Assistant City Clerk, uh, motion please? Roll call?
Yes. Just want to confirm the maker of the motion was, um, Councilmember Jane, seconded by
Jaal.
Thank you. Councilmember Watanabe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Councilmember Park?
Yes.
Councilmember Jane?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
And Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. Thank you, that passes unanimously. So next, we have public presentations, do we have any members of the public that would like to make a presentation? Ken Kratz, you're up. Ken? You're muted.
Yeah, can you?
Go ahead.
Al?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I do have a statement. I sent an email to the City Council yesterday for your meeting about a problem with the city attorney's, uh, representative, uh, statements before the recent election of members for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. He made vague and erroneous statements about the propriety of spouses serving concurrently on the committee that were based neither in law nor city policy. The attorney even said that no law was being broken in regard to voting. I think his statements affected the outcome of the member selection process and thereby violated our city's code of ethics. Our B-PAC chairperson subsequently decided to not allow full voting rights of the married couple during the election process. I request that you require that attorney to retract those statements and the B-PAC be allowed to have a revote. If the city council feels there is a merit in prohibiting spouses to serve concurrently, and there are no laws against such a prohibition, I request that you create a written public policy that applies to all the city's boards, commissions, and committees, so that policy is applied fairly. I think a policy of that type would need to address additional circumstances such as related and unrelated people living in the same household or neighborhood, or work in the same business, social, or political organization. I think the city has a policy preventing council members from voting on proposed projects within 500 feet of their residents, for instance. Please look into this issue, uh, that the videotape from that meeting, I think, is, will be available soon, please review that, and, uh, please resolve this issue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kratz, and you know, we can't take action on this item, but we can, um, give a nod to the city attorney's office to maybe give a response, uh, so that it's clear, it's clear in terms of related people serving on, um, boards and commissions and committee. City Attorney, I don't know.
I, I don't have the answer right here, right, right?
No, no, I'm not asking you to, I just wanted to.
Yeah, no, I'll, I, I will definitely look into this, for sure.
Okay, thank you, so by consensus in the council, we can send it your way?
Sure.
That we can get some clarification, thank you, Mr. Kratz, for bringing that forward. Is there anyone else, any other member of the public? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go now to consent items pulled for discussion, I'm, I'm going to go in order of the consent calendar. So the first item is 3F, Councilmember Jaal, uh, you had questions or comments? That's 3F, action on small cell attachment agreement between the city of Santa Clara and California New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, Councilmember Jaal?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to combine both 3F and 3II, they basically pertain to the same, uh, concerns I have. It has been brought to my notice by some of the residents, they are concerned about the 5G antennas, whether they're wireless or somewhere, and, uh, these installations are very few in the city, so, and there are certain FCC guidelines which prohibit us to pick and choose or deny any particular location, but I would like to ask staff, uh, what can we do to accommodate any resident, resident concerns? We can request the, uh, concerned vendor to move the antenna to a different location, nearby location, where it is not impacting the residents. So I would like to hear some comments from the staff, what can be the remedial action for this thing?
Um, City Manager, do you have a staff member that might be available to answer these questions?
I do, I'm going to ask if Manuel. I do. I'm going to ask if Manuel can answer the questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. A pleasure to be here tonight. Thank you for the question, council member. Yeah, so there's very limited that the city can dictate related to placing, placing the antennas and it is required by the FCC. There's legal requirements for us to facilitate that process. The things that we do have in place is that we have very strict standards as to how they're going to be installed. As part of the standards, the installation requires them to do RF testing for the antenna as well as RF testing for any residents living within 50 feet of the antenna. And as part of the encroachment permit process, they will have to acquire an encroachment permit process, they'll have to notify the residents within a certain area that the antenna will be going in. But we are required to facilitate the process. We do have the very strict standards. We have to make sure that those standards are followed and that includes the RF testing to make sure that it meets the FCC requirements. And there'll be notices going out to let the residents know that the installation will be occurring.
Thank you, Mr. Manuel. Just a follow-up question on that. When a resident get notified and if they have concerns, I know last time it was not, my understanding is it cannot be brought back for decision-making. So how do resident raise their concern and what is the redressable process for that would be?
And I'm not sure if last, from the last time, I think you might be referring to a different type of cellphone antenna that was going at a certain location. These are the 5G wireless that are going to be within city streetlights. And there would, it's just a permitting process that will be occurring. The agreement in place is the only process that would go through the council after that. If they meet the standards, if they meet the FCC requirements required for the testing, and they pull the encroachment permits and meet the requirement, the encroachment permits, it would be just a ministerial approval process.
Okay, so my request would be during that administrative process, if they can at least hear the resident concern and basically if there are alternate locations which we can fulfill our resident issues, that would be great as a request.
Okay, we'll take that request. And I also do want to note, Councilmember Chahal, because we did provide the response on the, on item three II, that the response was intended to state that in the future, there will probably be requests for 5G antennas on our power poles as well. However, this current agreement that you're reviewing today, that is not for 5G wireless antennas, it's a pole contact agreement. So at this time, that would not allow the wireless, the 5G wireless antennas as part of that agreement. We do expect those will come in the future as well, though.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your feedback. And with that, I would like to make a motion to approve both item three F and three II.
Thank you, City Attorney. Can we take those together or do we have to separate the two? Can we take the two of them together?
Yeah, I think so, sure, because you do that with the consent calendar anyway. So I think it's.
Okay.
It's fine.
All right, very good. Motion for approval for both three F and three II.
Second.
A motion, a second. Thank you, Vice Mayor Hardy. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak on that? Okay.
Members have their hand raised.
Thank you very much. So Assistant City Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Watanabe.
Yes.
Councilmember Chahal.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hardy.
Yes.
Councilmember Park.
Yes.
Councilmember Jane.
Yes.
Councilmember Becker.
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore.
Yes. Thank you. That passes unanimously. The next consent calendar item we have is Councilmember Watanabe.
Yeah.
And that's item three H, information report regarding automobile burglaries, including strategies for prevention. Councilmember Watanabe?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, the reason I pulled this, well, for obvious reasons, it seems tis the season. And I know car break-ins are definitely on the rise, especially, well, I'm sure all over the city of Santa Clara, but I know in the city of Santa, the north side, they have increased as well, even as early as Sunday night, there were four break-ins in my neighborhood. I know over in Agnes Village, the Montague area, over just the last three weeks, there have been numerous break-ins. And I believe the police chief or a member of the police department was going to make a presentation on this issue or talk about it.
Yes, I think, is Chief Nicolai on or whoever sent from the police department?
Yeah, no, this is Chief Nicolai. I'm on.
Oh, hi, Chief. There you go.
There's a PowerPoint, if we could start the PowerPoint.
Madam Mary, may I make a few comments before that?
Can they wait till after the PowerPoint?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, council. So this issue has been going on for many, many years and way back in 2019, which seems so long ago these days, Assemblymember Canton Chu actually lobbied and got us a significant chunk of money. And that was for all the cities in his district. So we were all granted $750,000. And you can see it was Fremont, Milpitas, Newark, San Jose, and Santa Clara. And if you go to the next slide. So when we got this money, all the groups got together, all the departments designated a representative. And this is an issue that affects not only Santa Clara, but the entire Bay Area. So some of the things we're doing with the money are funding a crime analyst in the district attorney's office to help track crime, doing community education, purchasing equipment, staffing expenses, and trying to think of creative, you know, prevention strategies to help mitigate some of these automobile thefts. So if you go to the next slide. So this shows kind of a history of the auto burglaries. And I know it doesn't seem like it, but if you'll notice that in 2020, our burglaries are actually down a little bit here in the, at the end. And, but again, it's a, it's a problem that affects the entire Bay Area. And part of the problem is because it's such a hard crime to, to catch someone in the act. Basically, you can pull up next to a car, break a window, and pull a laptop out and be gone in under a minute. So you can see it's a, it's a pretty prevalent problem in our city. But again, it is across the Bay Area. So next slide. So some of the things we've been doing to date is probably the most important thing is getting the message out to people. And that's things like lock your car, especially during this time, don't leave packages that are visible. And another, you know, a very similar crime is the thefts of packages off porches. So it's basically just getting the message out to people to become smarter, to make themselves less vulnerable. We've also met with hotels and shopping centers, and again, this was obviously pre-COVID, where they were handing out flyers reminding their tenants and the people that are coming to the hotel, people that rented cars, to, hey, watch out, don't leave things in your car. We've also been trying to track the items that are stolen, because again, the theft itself is so hard to stop. So what we try to do is find out where the property is going and track the, you know, the fences and things like that. Next slide, perfect. One of the things we did is created the Remove It or Lose It campaign. We did a video and again, posted that online. We purchased some A-frame signs that we were going to use on all of our city events, which again, were dropped because of COVID. And we actually had a advertisement that was going to be on the Waze app, again, reminding people to not leave their laptops, packages, items visible in the car. And those two last things, obviously, were delayed because of COVID. So next slide. So some of the items that we've purchased, things like vehicle trackers. So if we do identify a suspect, we are able to get a warrant and place a tracker on their vehicle. And then we can track actually, you know, if they're doing additional crimes and again, trying to trace the stolen property to see if we can recover something. ALPR technology, license plate readers, that's great to help track vehicles that are doing this, because again, it's, it's not just in our city, it's across the Bay Area. So if you look down to the Vigilant, it's a web-based system that multiple agencies use to track vehicles. So if one agency notices a vehicle is doing burglaries, we can track it to see if it's in other agencies doing the exact same thing. And then the leads online, that's just a great follow-up tool for our investigators. So if something is stolen, like a laptop that has a serial number, we're able to follow up and try to recover that stolen property. Next slide. I mentioned ALPR, so it's not new to our department. We have five vehicles that actually have license plate readers on their car. And so they typically look for stolen vehicles, but they also look for vehicles associated to any felony crime. And again, we'll be using that technology to help us, you know, track the car break-ins. So if you go to the next slide, what we're very excited about trying is a community camera program. So what we're talking about doing is putting license plate readers around the major thoroughfares into our city. What we've learned is that the majority, the vast majority of people that we've arrested for auto burglary do not live in Santa Clara. They come into our city. And part of the reason is, is because we have easy access, easy freeway access off of several main thoroughfares to get onto Stevens Creek, Santa Moss Expressway, Great America Parkway. So it's easy access. And as a result, we've had a lot of criminals come into our city to commit the crimes. So if we are able to track these vehicles, again, hopefully we'll be able to get some leads and make some arrests. Go to the next slide. When I talk about potential locations, you can see it's the major ingress streets and intersections into our city. And so what we're going to do is we're going to take one of those and we're going to do a pilot program. And we're going to test and see whether or not utilizing these cameras will actually help reduce crime in a specific location. And so we're really excited about that, because we think this is going to be a very beneficial tool. And in the long run, it will help reduce the car break-ins across the entire city. So next slide. So the financial considerations, this funding obviously is a one-time funding. So we're going to be able to set up a camera system. We can set it up citywide and have it running for a couple of years. And after that, we'll have to decide, is it worth it? Is it worth funding this long-term? Or, you know, as the old saying goes, is the juice not worth the squeeze? So we feel that doing this is going to be a much better use of the money. One of the things we started doing, again, pre-COVID, was we put officers out in overtime shifts in high-visibility locations to try to deter auto burglaries. And what we found is it did deter it in those lots, but the crooks would just go to a different lot. So instead of doing a small, one-time solution, we're looking at doing something that will help the city long-term. And next slide. So as I've mentioned before, COVID has changed some of our crimes we've seen. Catalytic converters, the theft of those has been on the rise, bicycle thefts, commercial burglaries have also increased. And then because all the vehicles were not in retail areas, in, right, they, the thieves transitioned to the residential neighborhoods. And you can see that as shopping centers reopen, the criminals go back there. Next slide. So that's the presentation. And again, really, the best thing we can do as a city is get the message out to our residents. And by being good witnesses and good neighbors, that's how we catch people, is when someone calls and says, there's somebody suspicious in my neighborhood, that's when we catch them. So that's what we strongly encourage people to do.
Thank you very much for that. Councilmember Chahal?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief Nicolai, for the report. At the outset, I wanted to point out that I had several calls and intimations in my district too, in residential areas. And residents are really impacted with this thing and they are looking forward to the solutions. But I know you proposed some of those and they're really looking forward to that. I do have a question regarding the community camera program. I know you did mention that it will be implemented at major intersections. Are there any plans like where in the residential areas we have incurred like more number of car burglaries and issues? So are we trying to implement, like, would we take a couple of, or whatever number to implement that in the actual residential neighborhood? That's my first question. Can we look at that option?
Yeah, what we're doing at first is a pilot program to try a specific area and see, you know, do we need more cameras in one location or fewer cameras? And the idea is if we were able to capture all the vehicles coming into the city, and then if there was a break-in in the neighborhood and, for example, someone caught it on their Ring camera and they caught, oh, it's a, you know, red Honda Accord, then maybe we'd be able to go back and find a red Honda Accord coming into the city at the same time and get a license plate. So that's the theory behind the camera program. Financially, I just don't think it would be possible for us to put a camera into every location that a car has been broken into in the past.
Yeah, my only suggestion, request is if we can, within the pilot, if we also pick up one or two residential areas which are more vulnerable, that will can give us a little bit more data points, oh, it is working or not. That was my request, right? Okay, and my second is, we just got an email regarding the package drop-off. I know you also mentioned about it in your presentation. That's also a big issue. And the request was, I think that's open question, I'm just putting it for information for the council, or if PD has some options to talk to the delivery agencies. And the resident requested that we should be mandating all the delivery persons to either ring a bell or knock the door. And to, for my deliveries, a lot of many times I get that, people knock and I go back inside and check, pick up the package right away, but sometimes they don't do anything. So is there anything we can educate the delivery agencies on that, if they are under our purview, to do that?
I'm not sure that's under a police department jurisdiction, but just from my experience, whenever I'm home and a delivery comes, they ring the bell. So I'm hoping that it's just a common practice.
Yeah, right. Yeah, sometimes they don't. And that was the request, like, if you can request them, right? And I also want to point out, I did reach out to city manager for several of these issues and she was very proactive when taking remedial actions for whatever I reported to her. And I appreciate the feedback from the PD for those issues I reached, like cases I raised. And I do have a request to residents, please do report anything happening in your neighborhood. That gives us a better idea of the location and also about the statistics, how many we are going out. And as Chief Nicolai mentioned, if you have the description of the vehicle, and especially it will be more important down the line when we have more, the trial cameras at the major intersection. So any information being sent to PD, reporting to PD will really help to us alleviate this problem. Yeah. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Councilmember Becker.
Thank you, Mayor. Good report. Thank you, Chief Nicolai. I honestly think, you know, it comes down to, I think everyone thinks that, you know, we live in Santa Clara, they all think we're rich. And actually, I don't, we're not rich. We just live in properties that look like they're rich. So I see, you know, it's a very big issue here in the Silicon Valley. It continues to happen more and more. Personally, myself, about, what was it, a year ago, my car was broken into, my backpack was stolen, and I was stupid because I didn't think of taking the backpack out of the car because I was in a hurry. Of taking the backpack out of the car, because I was in a hurry. And that was my fault, and that's why the reminders are a good thing for people to to have that. I mean, it's it's, times are getting really desperate now. I mean, I had a blanket stolen off my patio. I hope it just went to somebody that needed the blanket. For warmth. I mean, it's it's that petty of crimes now. And I think, you know, going around my district and speaking to people. It, the number one issue has been the break-ins in cars, has been porch pirates. Just shady characters being in neighborhoods. And, you know, like Chief Nicoli said, it's it's being in. Everyone's coming to Santa Clara off of these main thoroughfares. I mean, like Councilmember Watanabe was talking about. She's right off of 237, uh, up in the north side. You got, you know, my neighborhood, which is 880 as well as the old quad. And then you also have over, you know, where Karen's district is, and also Kevin's, and Raj, you got the expressways. And, you know, it. A lot of access points for that. And I think that that's the. Using the cameras, as much as I hate surveillance, because I hate being kind of a security state, but this is to help people. And track things, because personally, like you were saying, I mean, you just gave me the thought of. Wanting to go now and take a picture of my serial number on my computers. You know, all my work computers have it, and it now makes me wanna follow through on that, because. You're educating me, but you're also educating the public, and that's what I appreciate in what you're doing right now. I read the entire report, and, you know, I appreciate what former Chief Dan Winters has done, and also what, you know, what you're doing and pushing this forward. Because, you know, I wish we could have a way of of doing this like DoorDash, because my roommates, they order DoorDash a lot. And what happens when they get their DoorDash, they get a text message telling them that their DoorDash is at the door, and they can go pick it up. And the reason why DoorDash did that was because people were actually, their food was being stolen. That is a shock I've heard. I mean, someone stealing food. And I've also heard the stories of people breaking into cars just to steal groceries. That's why I really do encourage that, the signage, to say, you know, keep things out of your car, if you don't want it to be stolen. And lastly, you know, what Raj, Councilmember Chahal was saying, you know, we have to really watch out for each other, you know, if you see shady characters. Or sketchy things in your neighborhood, you know, you see something, say something. Don't be afraid. And one thing I do ask the police, though, which the neighbors have been really bugging me about, is please have more. More patrols, more cops just going around in neighborhoods, even in the middle of the night, just to see what's going on. I know we're kind of being short-staffed and everything going on, but, you know, the holidays. You know, I think a lot of the council members and a lot of staff are also being bugged by this, because people are really concerned, and. COVID's made it a little tougher on everyone. So to end, thank you so much for. Putting this together and really focusing on tackling this issue that's been basically a systematic issue for for years now. So thank you again.
Great. Thank you for those comments.
Mayor, you're muted.
Oh, my gosh, I'm I'm calling Councilmember Park, Councilmember Park, and I'm the one muted. Okay, Councilmember Park.
Yes, if you can't hear me, it's usually a, you know, a problem in somebody else's side, because I'm always talking. Anyway, my concern with police cars randomly going through the neighborhood at night is they may catch me in in my car on the side of the road. On a closed session council meeting. That may be disturbed. But I also know that we have a lot of, a lot of notifications I get about break-ins and catalytic converter. Issues are on Nextdoor. And I do know that the police department does have. What is it, communications to people on Nextdoor? I know that as a neighborhood watch leader, I was told that some of our communications would be transitioning to Nextdoor. And if there are a good way for people on Nextdoor to get communications back to the people. In the police department who are also on Nextdoor, that could be a good way of, A, easily reporting problems in the areas. And B, gathering some demographic demographic data. This is, these are the neighborhoods where we're getting these incidents of. Of these kinds of problems. And that way, it would help. Perhaps prioritize neighborhoods or prioritize issues in different places in Santa Clara. Is there a way for people to easily send information or for police department to read? Nextdoor digest of the neighborhoods they are part of, or they send information to, to, for the police to help out in these areas?
We would need to research and and call Nextdoor and have a conversation with them. I know that over the years. We've had a couple of follow-up conversations with them based on similar inquiries. But how they manage the the Nextdoor definition, as well as who has access to it. Is administered through their preference. And so we we can place a call and follow up if that's the pleasure of the council.
I can tell you, just I, I, City Manager and and Councilmember Park, I can tell you what I've seen on Nextdoor is, I've seen our police department. Encourage people to not report crimes on Nextdoor, to call 911 or the cities. But they they do monitor Nextdoor, but they always tell them, they encourage them, do not report crimes here. Because in case they're not monitoring it, that they won't see it. So they don't, they they, I've seen that over and over. And I don't know if the chief has a comment about that.
And and we've received screenshots. If there's information that someone, we've received screenshots and have worked from there. But in terms of having reading access and responding access, we don't have, we don't have. Nextdoor sets its restrictions in terms of how people are able to communicate on Nextdoor. And so we don't have the authority to to just go in and start running city business on on their platform. And so it it would require, if if your point is, can we, can they send us information, we respond? That's a conversation we have to have with Nextdoor. They are, they are very restrictive and have been in the past.
And we should have it with our police department as well, because they're the ones.
Absolutely.
Know that are, have to respond, so.
Understood. I I think that on Nextdoor, I've seen basically posts that are just FYI for your information to other residents, other neighbors. That this is, this is happening, so be careful. But I thought if there is a way to get this kind of information, get a a good. Back and forth dialogue that also gives us geographic information easily, quickly. That would be good too. But again, I think that the recommendation to report everything through 911 is as well taken. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jane, followed by Watanabe.
Yes, my sister had a laptop stolen smash and grab in front of my house. I had a backpack stolen at a restaurant smash and grab. So I understand the need for programs and some sort of theft deterrents. But I am concerned about cameras everywhere. I know in China, it's become a real problem where they're tracking people. What kinds of privacy protections do you have with these cameras?
Well, I think the cameras are set up just strictly to track license plates. And, you know, we have. Very strict requirements for who can and look at license plates, and it's, you know, the the need to know. So it's, it's not like we are. Tracking people, that's not any kind of facial recognition or anything like that. It is strictly license plates and vehicles coming into the city.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Watanabe, followed by Chahal.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief Nicoli, for the report. I really appreciate it. Going on that question about the the license plate reader, is it similar? To the license plate readers that the bridges use when people are crossing, like instead of. Like when there's a toll, instead of paying the toll, you have like the EZ Pass. And 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 there's a scanner that reads your license plate and takes the information. Is it, is it like that, that it just reads the license plate?
Right. I don't know if it's the exact same system, but the concept is the same. And it's a, it's a system that's currently being used in some of the neighboring cities that are also part of this grant. Like Milpitas and Fremont. And they've used it very successfully where, once they got the system up and running. They make substantial decrease in crime in their cities. So it's a, it's a proven commodity.
Yes, it sounds like it. And, you know, I appreciate it and as a way. Instead of using like police overtime, I I think it's money that's better expended. Not that, you know, we don't like to pay our police officers, but, you know, if we can invest in in equipment. That benefits the city and the money goes farther. I I think that's, that's a great idea. I mean, I know there were several officers like stationed in Rivermark Plaza last summer, and. Yet they were definitely, their presence was a deterrent, and even in the mornings. But I I think a license plate reader definitely is more beneficial. And actually, when we were talking about. The the racers and the sideshows like around the city and particularly on Lafayette. I remember one of the options was possibly a a license plate reader. And and so, I mean, would the, I mean, based on the locations that you listed, I saw Lafayette and Calle de Luna. And Montague and Lick Mill are definitely areas where there are issues, those issues. Of speed racing and and sideshows. Would these cameras still help in that respect as well?
Oh, yeah, most definitely. Let's say you had a a sideshow at Lafayette and and there was a pedestrian that was hit by a car. Definitely be a situation where the cameras would, you know, be invaluable.
Because, yeah, you'd probably, you'd have a timeframe, you'd have an idea of when the car came through, and and would you be able to go back like through the camera? And then. Determine which car, potential car it was that did the. The damage.
Yeah, potentially, that that would be the hope.
Okay, good, good. Okay, that that's really encouraging to hear. And then. There've been a couple of discussions about calling and and calling in and recommending, which I I think is. Definitely invaluable. I mean, either 911 or the non-emergency number. I I know the dispatchers use their discretion, you know, in determining whether or not it's an emergency or. Something or something that's not an emergency. But but there are two two numbers that that can be called called. I wanted to ask you regarding the Neighborhood Watch Program, which I think it it's been very effective and definitely getting folks involved. Are we still? Using the program or promoting the program or? I I think there's been a changeover in the officers that oversee the program, but I wasn't sure what the status was.
Yes, we have had some transition, but the Neighborhood Watch Program, it is up and running. We've had to transition, obviously, to Zoom meetings, but we have had successful Zoom meetings. And the hope is, is that once maybe summer and things open up, we'll be able to go back to in-person meetings again.
Great, great. Yeah, because I I know it's definitely, it's just a great way for people to communicate and just know that they. Have access to the police department and be able to ask questions and know what's, you know, a reportable suspicion. Or or just, you know, let the police be able to make that determination. So it's definitely an invaluable program. That, just finally, do we, I know a former State Assembly Member, Kenson Chu. Got that, those grants for the cities, for the five cities in the Bay Area, including Santa Clara. Did we, is there a report or any kind of an update on the? The the money that's been expended and the benefits, you know, that it has of. The grant has offered the cities or, and particularly Santa Clara, that we could see or just get an update on? What was done?
Yeah, I think so far, the majority of our money that was spent was on the overtime. And that was during the summer, like you noted, where we were using officers in those high visibility roles to deter. And again, I don't know how you would put a a price tag on that, but we would say it was successful, because. The the numbers of thefts did drop while those officers were out there. But again, that is not sustainable. So we did spend a little bit of money on things like A-frames, but the majority of money is still there. And that's why we wanna look for this camera system, because we think that's gonna be a, again, a long-term solution. As opposed to, you know, using overtime, which would be a short-term solution.
Exactly, yes. No, I I really appreciate that. I I agree with you 100%. And, you know, again, you know, just reiterating, people calling in, reporting crimes. Because it helps the police department establish a record of, you know, where things are occurring, where crimes are occurring, break-ins. Porch thefts, whatever it may be. It definitely has, it it is definitely beneficial when people call in and report. I mean, the police, I I know it's hard sometimes, but, you know, there are ways that people can report crimes online. But it still establishes a record that the police department can see, you know, where there's a high. High incidence of of activity and and, you know, maybe focus on on an area over one area. Just because of the all, the number of reports coming in. Is that correct?
You hit the nail right on the head. We we need to know where the crime is so that we can, you know, do some predictive policing and and hopefully stop it in the future. And, you know, reporting a crime is as simple as going online and filing an online report. So if you're on Nextdoor and you're posting something, switch over to our website and make a report there.
Thank you so much, Chief. Again, I I really appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Chahal.
Thank you, Mayor. Coming back to the privacy issue, Chief Nicoli, like, do we have a defined? Like, how will we be using the data we get for the license plates? Like, it will be only be used for burglaries? Or some of the instances like hit and run? Are we defining that process? Because we wanna balance out the privacy versus the community protection. So do we have some guidelines and who will be having access to this data?
Yeah, that's a very good question. And like I said, we we currently have ALPRs, so this isn't not anything new. So we're we're currently using the system. And like I said, a most, the most common. Thing that it's used for is to find stolen vehicles or vehicles that have been entered in the system as a felony vehicle. For example, it was used in a assault, or it was used in a robbery, or like you said, in a fatal hit and run. And so it's, it's nothing new in that. We already have these systems in place. One of the key things is that we won't be keeping the data ourselves. The data will be going to the NICRIC, which is the. Our area task force that has all the license plate reading data, so that all the agencies will have access to the data.
Okay, so is this program related to, not only to our city, versus it's related, it's connected to basically. Area-wide, like Bay Area, or this is only pilot program within the city? The camera, we are trying to incorporate.
Well, we'll have the cameras in our city, but like I said, several other cities already have these camera systems in place. That already feed this license plate data. And so, for example, what would happen in, you know, in a perfect world is a car is involved in an incident in Fremont. They get the license plate, they immediately upload the license plate as a as a wanted vehicle. And then we would get flagged if that vehicle came into our city. So we would know that, hey. A vehicle that was just involved in a crime is now in our city, and that'll give us the head start to try to catch them before they do something in our city.
Okay, so that's a very defined purpose, and it already is defined, basically. So I I may ask the city attorney, like, what, should we? Think of any policy matter where we can protect the privacy of the residents? Let's say somebody says, hey, I was being spied by this camera, and the purpose of that, whatever they use. If the PD used it for a different purpose, can we define those? This is the only purpose is we can use this data for nothing more than that. That's it.
You know, the issue has not really come up here in Santa Clara before in terms of giving a full report to council on. The various issues created by cameras. Yeah, and there's, I mean, there's basically cameras everywhere at this point. But I know that the issue has come up in San Francisco, and I think it's come up to some extent in San Jose. So what I, I guess what I would do is say. We can, it it's it's kind of a workload issue right now, because we're very, we're very, we have quite a bit of work. So why don't we do this? Why don't we include that as a as a possible topic during priority setting session? And I mean, we can get you some preliminary information, but as far. And I mean, we can get you some preliminary information, but as far as any policy choices the council might make, um i- i- it's going to be a workload issue at this point, since, since we are so um bogged down with um all the COVID concerns right now and, and all the other issues. So um I guess my answer is basically, we can get back to you with some limited information in the beginning. And um if the council chooses to have more, more information, um we, we can work on that. Pending other priorities the council might have of our office.
Okay, that, that would help. And to Chief, like I would like, if we can have a, like a uh policy paper, hey, we have these cameras just proactively uh for our residents. We have these cameras, but these will be only be used by, for this, this, this purpose. That would really help to alleviate any privacy concerns of residents. If we can have that blueprint, uh one page or whatever, S-S, that would really help.
Thank, thank you. Um city manager, do you, you had your hand up? Do you need to say anything?
I, I did have my hand up and I was just also going to offer that um we used to um light license plate readers for the Port of Oakland and there is, they had a whole community group that issued um policy on this matter. And so we can easily dig that up and share it with the city council on um issues of privacy rights in public spaces and how the policy was uh fleshed out by another community. That, that's been very recent work.
Oh, that would help. Thank you.
Thank you. Um and, and before we, we move on, or Councilmember uh Watanabe, did you make a motion to note and file the report?
Uh hi, um no, I didn't, but um I'm happy to go ahead and make a motion as long as there, there are no other hands raised. I'm happy to go ahead and make a motion uh to um move a note and file. Yes.
Yeah, your, your, your sound was going out, so.
Yes, note, uh I'm happy to make a motion to note and file, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Is there a second on that? All right, and I, I just want to say something to the chief because I was talking speaking of, you know, car issues, I was talking to a gentleman today who was the uh he was the victim of a carjacking in, at his home in Willow Glen. He was just unloading his car about four thirty in the afternoon and someone came up and jumped in his car and tried to take off and he chased them. And the perpetrators were, he was picked up by two other um two other people and he pulled out a, a um assault rifle and shot at this man uh two times and luckily missed him. And it turns out the car ended up in the city of Santa Clara with the three perpetrators. And uh was found and picked, all three of them, I believe all three of them were picked up by our Santa Clara Police Department. And this gentleman was so very grateful uh that the, our police department was right on it and um we, they were able to apprehend uh these gentlemen who really, uh four thirty in the afternoon in your driveway in a, on a nice street in Willow Glen and was shot at. And so uh he just told me how grateful he was for our police department and the work that our police department did and the follow-up that our department had with him and his neighbors and everyone else. So I wanted to pass that on, Chief. I'm sure you're quite aware of that.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much for the, for the compliments. Uh it's definitely a dangerous time out there.
It is very dangerous and it just made me think, you know, at four thirty in the afternoon, you're minding your own business and this happens in any neighborhood anywhere around here. We all have to be diligent. One nice thing he told me was that his neighbors came forward right away. They all had camera footage of what had happened and were wanting to, to give information on the camera footage to help him and, and to help protect their neighborhood. So it was neighbors working together with other neighbors. Um city attorney Doyle, you had something to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to report that um uh my incre- our, my incredibly proactive staff is watching at home and they um Sue, Sue Ruder just let me know that state law does require an ALPR policy and we do have one. And it's compliant and it's on the uh police department webpage. So so that information is actually available right now in terms of what, what our policy is.
Thank you. That's, that's very good to know. Appreciate that. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this? Any member of the public? I don't see any hands, so um Assistant City Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Watanabe?
Yes.
Councilmember Shahal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Councilmember Park?
Yes.
Councilmember Jane?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. Thank you. That passes unanimously and thank you, Chief Nicolai, for your report. Uh the next uh consent uh calendar item that was pulled for discussion.
Show the yellow.
Hello? Hi, is something happening? Okay, that passes unanimously. The next consent count, can you hear me? Shows.
Yes, we can hear you.
The next consent calendar item is item three R. Uh that was pulled by Councilmember Becker. Action on final map for tract one oh five two eight at eighteen thirty-four Worthington Circle slash ninety North Winchester Boulevard. Councilmember Becker, you pulled this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gilmore. Um so I, I spoke to a business owner, Kirk Vartan. Uh earlier this evening, we were trying to speak yesterday uh about this item. Uh and well, we know what happened, it was delayed today. And so I'm glad I got to talk to Kirk uh because he did have some questions that I really wanted to get across. Um and a- actually, maybe see if there's any answers to it. Um i- is there a, uh any from what he said in his note to me, it's, does this preclude or in any way, uh well, he's talking about the senior building? And he's asking about having a second entrance on the west side of the senior affordable housing. Uh mainly because he's figuring it's future-proofing the building. Um you know, we don't know about the future of mobility holds and this is a fifty-plus-year-life building. Um so the back entrance i- could have the vehicle requirements to change over time. And if that's the case, does any action preclude or in any way not allow for a secondary entrance on the west side of that senior affordable housing building? Um and I have a couple more questions if, i- if a- a- anyone has elaboration on that.
Okay, um this is a approval of the final map, track map. So city staff is, if you've heard.
I was going to ask um the city attorney if he wanted to make comment because the issue at hand is the track map. And there is limited to, there's consistency with res- with respect to imposing design changes. Um so I wanted, and I know that the developer has already expressed um his position about objecting to the design changes, but I don't know if Brian wants to comment more about
Sure, sure, I can.
Design at, on, on a track map.
Yeah, so the um, um, thank you, um Councilmember Becker. The, 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 this particular action that you're taking tonight is, is an extremely strictly controlled process under state statutes. And this is not the, the, the point at which you can make a change like the one that Mr. Vartan is interested in, in making. But it, it, it does not preclude the possibility of some, a- at some future date making that change either through some kind of architectural amendment or, or approval or so- some other stage of looking at this. But, but it's just simply, uh when, when you have a track map, you just, you just can't you can't impose a condition like this on a final map, once, once the whole subdivision process has already been gone through.
Okay, good. Uh I mean, I wish I could have asked this uh prior, uh you know, to submitting some questions to council, uh to, to staff. Uh but getting this, you know, now, I just wanted to go through this and confirm because I, I really wanted to address his questions and follow through on that. So I appreciate the response and um I have no more comments.
Do you have a motion to um approve this?
I have a motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this? Any member of the public?
We have no hands raised.
Thank you. Seeing none, we have a motion by Councilmember Becker, second by Vice Mayor Karen Hardy. Uh roll call, Assistant City Clerk?
Councilmember Watanabe?
Yes.
Councilmember Shahal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Councilmember Park?
Yes.
Councilmember Jane?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Uh now, okay, so we're finished with the consent calendar. Uh the next item is uh public hearing general bu- business. We have action on a written petition submitted by Sam Liu requesting a discussion and reconsideration of a ten-foot CMU wall with the project at thirty-two hundred Scott Boulevard. Do we have Sam here?
Yes, we do have Sam on the line.
Okay, if you'd like to um uh tell us uh what you'd like us to do, Sam? You're, you're muted.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, is that, is that you, Sam?
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Good, all right. Wait, hold on one second, Sam. Um Mister, uh Councilmember Jane, you had something to say before Mister, before Sam starts?
Yeah, I just wanted to disclose that I've had um eh um discussions with Sam and I have also visited his office and looked at the wall area that is being considered. So I just wanted to disclose that.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, Sam, go ahead. The floor is yours.
Okay, yeah, okay. Oh, right now, I, I can, can you hear me, please?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great, thanks. Dear uh Mayor and the council members, we are post-building a ten-feet CMU concrete wall for thirty-two hundred Scott project along our property line for the following reasons. The ten-feet concrete wall is a serious threat to public safety. Nearly half of our parking spaces and all of our pedestrian walkways are very close to the, to this wall. If the wall collapses, it would cause serious harm to nearby people and their vehicles. In addition to earthquakes, truck crashes can cause the wall to collapse because it's near our shipping, shipping dock that has frequently truck activities. They all can also fall onto the high voltage transmitter within the keep-out zone on our side. Damaging the city-owned equipment is also a serious public safety threat. Due to the risk of the ten-feet concrete wall collapsing, we would have to set up a fourteen-feet safe zone away from the wall according to OSHA standards. Thus, twenty-nine out of sixty-six of our current parking spaces cannot be used. It's a serious infringement to our property right and a violation of the city parking regulations. Building a ten-feet concrete wall is unnecessary and will harm neighborhood harmony since no other member of our community has ever built a ten-feet wall. The wall is not in compliance with the city fence code. We respectfully request the council to support our petition for preventing the construction of a ten-feet concrete wall of thirty-two hundred Scott Boulevard. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much, Sam. Um so um city manager, can I ask you about this? Because um our options are to uh refer to the um staff to, to, to deal with this and then come back and report to the council on this. Have you, are you aware of this situation and um do you have any information on it? Or would you like us to refer this to you?
We, we are aware of the situation and um we certainly can um uh review the issue and, and make and speak more with Mr. Liu and be from here to January twelfth and come back with a report and the council can determine if it would like to hear the item or not. Um recognizing that we do have some uh extended period of time between tonight's meeting and our next meeting and the council may not want to wait for that uh amount of time, but we could come back and and just respond how we're able to address the issue if at all.
Well, I know.
I don't know if staff wants to respond anymore.
Well, and I want to ask because we're not, uh we're, you know, we're, we're supposed to talk about how we how we take action on this, but not talk about the actual merits of it for you to come back to re- report for us um so that we can actually take some action on it. So um typically, we just refer it to you to come back with a report. So, okay, let me, I, I'd be looking for a motion for that. Um Councilmember Shahal, followed by Becker, followed by Jane.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh just to disclose, Mayor, I did meet to send Mr. Sam Liu and visited his office site uh to have the real visual on that. And uh I would make a motion that uh this item should be brought back to council after CDD looks into, Community Development Department looks into the details and discuss the issue with the two parties and it should be brought back to the council for uh whatever action we can take uh for this thing.
Okay, thank you. That's a good motion. So there's a motion. Is there a second to that motion?
I would second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. So thank you, uh Councilmember Becker.
Uh I just wanted to uh divulge that um I was contacted by Mr. Liu and uh by email and I've spoke to him.
Thank you. Uh Councilmember Jane?
My concern is that uh Mr. Liu's neighbor may go ahead and construct the wall in the intervening, intervening timeframe. So is there any way for us to put a stop on this, knowing that this is under consideration by council?
We're just referring it to staff, so um we, we don't.
Question for staff.
We don't, yeah, cause we don't have any documents or anything like that. The staff would have to follow through on that. City manager, do you have comments on that?
Um I, I think that I would like to hear from the city attorney and in terms of um based on the council policy on adding items and then at the same time I think it would constitute an action that's not on the agenda.
Yeah, I, 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 I don't think council could take an action to, to stop something like this. I think the only thing that the city might do is um uh the building department could take a look at whether the construction of the wall is, is if it's being done subject to a building permit, whether there's any grounds to issue a stop work order, but I, other than that, I, I, I don't think it would be within the, within the council's purview to somehow um try to stop this. Um that's, I, I, and, and, and this is coming from a, a standpoint of not knowing anything about what's really going on out there. I'm, I'm just, I'm just answering the question in terms of what would be the city's role in trying to stop this and I, and all I can think of would be um checking, checking to make sure the construction is in accord with the building code.
And not a dangerous situation.
Right, well, I mean, yeah, if, if there's some grounds to issue a stop work order, then, then the building official could make that determination, but that's, that's not something the council has purview over.
Uh this is Andrew Crabtree, Director of Community Development. I can also provide background information if you'd like, but we have I reviewed the um the, the concern from Mr. Liu and, and the, the subject wall i- is um um has been issued a building permit um as well as um planning approval.
Okay, reason for us to refer it. Um Councilmember Park, followed by Shahal.
So I also want to disclose that uh Mr. Liu did send me an email. I have not responded to the email or talked to him about this issue, but I do have a question about the, the wall and the, the construction, which it sounds like Mr. Liu's property uh was developed and existed prior to the, to this, this new development and this wall. I feel that it is a really bad policy for a new development to affect an existing development uh to the point of removing parking spaces, meaning that uh if a new development's going to go in, they have a lot of options, but the people who have already.
Member Park, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we, this isn't on the agenda for that kind of discussion. Either put it on a future agenda, refer it to staff.
Okay, then, then, again, I would like to put it on a future agenda. And again, I share the same concern that, that Mister, that Councilmember Jane has, which is if the, they build the wall in, in the meantime and we decide that the wall should not be built, do they, do they have to tear it down? Um I will, those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, and there's a motion for your information, a motion and second on the floor to refer this to the, to staff. Councilmember Shahal?
Uh Madam Mayor, I also want to point out, I know it's, we are discussing something which, which is gray area. Mr. Liu showed some permits which showed the different height of the wall and two different documents. So I think I would really. so I think I would really like, uh, Community Development Department to look into this thing while it is coming back to the council. Thank you.
That's why we're referring to staff, so, okay, referring to staff, uh, do we have any other members of the public that would like to speak on this issue? No, so, okay-
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
We have an e-comment from Alan Lai.
Okay, go ahead, read it.
Comment says, "I am an employee of NuNex next to thirty-two-hundred Scott. Our truck-loading dock is very close to where the wall is going to be built. The potential collapse from hit of a cargo truck or earthquakes damage really gives us worries about the safety. In order to prevent such incidents, we will have to set up a keep-out zone near the wall. As a consequence, our company will lose nearly half of our current parking spaces. I want to urge the city council and the developer of thirty-two-hundred Scott project to change the plan." End of comment.
Okay, thank you. So, I'm sure that the, um, Community Development Director has heard all these comments as well and, um, the City Manager will get back to us with a report, uh, in January, City Manager?
Yes, I was going to suggest that, um, we look at January twenty-sixth. The January twelfth agenda is very full already and the twenty-sixth looks like a better agenda.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Assistant City Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Watanabe?
Yes.
Councilmember Chahal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Councilmember Park?
Yes.
Councilmember Jane?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. Thank you, that passes unanimously and, um, thank you very much, City Council, Sam. Um, the city staff will be working with you and thank you for bringing this to our attention. Okay, next we have the public hearing on the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, the CAPER, twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-five Consolidated Plan, the CON Plan, substantial amendment, and the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one Annual Action Plan, AAP, substantial amendment, and approve the related budget amendment. So I'm gonna open the public hearing on this issue. City staff?
So we have Jonathan Beach, who's gonna provide a presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Is my sound okay?
Yes, you're, it's fine, thank you, Jonathan.
Great, yeah, this is Jonathan Beach, Housing Division Manager. Tonight I'm presenting an overview of our twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, which we refer to as the CAPER, for the use of our federal entitlement funds. Slide two, please. As you may know, the city receives entitlement funding from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD, for the purpose of benefiting low-income households by providing affordable housing and community services. Each year, the city is required to report on its annual performance measures to HUD through the CAPER report. Tonight's recommendation will be to approve the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty CAPER, to direct staff to incorporate all public comments and to submit the CAPER to HUD before the December thirty-first deadline. Slide three, please. Submission of the CAPER on December thirty-first is typically the last benchmark of the HUD calendar year. At the beginning of each calendar year, we conduct community outreach, determine our funding allocations for the year, and make funding awards to our public service providers. Our annual action plan is then due in May of each year and then we work to implement our program agreements with all of our community organizations starting in June. Typically, in a normal year, we submit the CAPER to HUD in September. However, given the challenges of COVID this year and simply just due to capacity constraints within the division, we, um, requested and were granted a waiver from HUD to submit our CAPER by the end of the calendar year. Another difference this year, um, with, with this s- staff report and recommendation is that we're also requesting substantial amendments to our five-year consolidated plan and our annual action plan to account for the emergency COVID funds that we received this year, which I'll touch on a, a bit later. Slide four, please. So the five-year consolidated plan identifies the housing and community needs of low-income households within the city and helps staff prioritize resources to address these needs over a five-year period. During our last five-year CON Plan, the community identified the following program priorities: affordable housing, homelessness, public services, which include, uh, senior services, services for domestic violence survivors, and emergency food services, fair housing, which includes our tenant landlord mediation, and also public facilities improvements. Slide five, please. This chart is an overview, um, that illustrates our twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty spending details as they relate to, um, our CON Plan priorities. Now, this, this doesn't encompass everything that we do within housing, there's, there's a lot more with the development pipeline, but this summarizes just those activities that are tied to our HUD funding, um, or activities that relate to our HUD CON Plan. So, we spent approximately three million dollars of federal funds, um, in twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty with the majority, or about sixty-five percent dedicated to our two core, um, HUD housing programs, our tenant-based rental assistance program, uh, also known as TIBRA, and our Neighborhood Conservation and Improvement Program, also known as NCIP. And then roughly fifteen percent goes, goes towards public service grants and fifteen percent towards admin cost. Slide six, please. In the last program year, we invested approximately nine hundred thousand dollars of home funds into our tenant-based rental assistance program. We assisted forty-six households, which includes seventy-three adults and a hundred and two children who are either homeless or at risk of becoming homeless. We also invested over eight hundred thousand dollars into our NCIP rehab program and assisted twenty-one mostly senior households rehab their homes, um, through accessibility improvements. We also helped many residents through our public service contracts, especially seniors, homeless, and domestic violence survivors. Slide seven, please. So, for those who aren't familiar with NCIP and TIBRA, I just wanted to briefly, um, summarize these programs. So, in, uh, since nineteen-seventy-six, the NCIP, uh, program has helped rehab over fifteen hundred single-family homes in Santa Clara. Our rehab scopes, um, are typically focused to address health and safety issues, help homeowners meet building code requirements, and very often address accessibility improvements for seniors. The program helps improve the safety and beauty of our neighborhood by revitalizing some of the city's older housing stock and it's, this is accomplished through low-interest capital loans with deferred principal and interest payments for up to twenty years for low-income qualified homeowners. Slide eight, please. It's just a quick sample of some of our recent NCIP rehab projects. Uh, here is a tree removal and facade painting upgrade, slide nine. Updated and replaced access areas for basement doors, slide ten. And then we did a recent roof and leak repair, slide eleven. And, and then our tenant-based rental assistance programs. Our TIBRA program provides rent assistance subsidies for up to twenty-four months to assist homeless families and families at risk of becoming homeless. The tenants are required to pay thirty percent of their income towards rent and then the city rental assistance subsidy covers the remaining difference. The program also supplements rent assistance with case management and housing services through our third-party administrators, Abode Services, and also Bill Wilson Center. Most participants are typically referred to Abode and Bill Wilson through the county's coordinated assessment queue and also we do get some referrals through the Santa Clara Unified School District. In normal times, we would have loved to bring some of our TIBRA families, um, to council to share some of their stories, but obviously, that wasn't an option tonight, uh, but we were lucky enough to have some families submit video testimonials that we love to share with council. Slide twelve. So, at the, at the bottom of the slide, if you can just, uh, press the play button, there's a video.
Hi, my name is Sahih Al Shrayden. Uh, I live in the twelve twenty-eighth, New Berlin. Uh, I have five kids and me and my wife. Two years ago, we had a hard time, bad time to find a house in, in this area and, uh, and until when I applied for the board, the board found the house for, until the board found the house for us, the case manager do a lot of things for us. Uh, they bear hard, uh, most of the rent and, uh, they apply for us for ADD, a lot of things for the loan and for maybe the owner house in the future. Thank you, Board, very much. God bless America, God bless Board. Thank you.
Okay, kids, so what has this program done for you? Jacob, you start.
Um, well, it's given us a, a house to live in and this house is like really close to, uh, my new school and it's given me the opportunity to, um, walk with, to football practice with all my friends.
Okay, Aaliyah?
It's given us a pool, um, we can play around with the babies, exercise, swim around the backyard, um, a bigger space and everything and upstairs and, and upstairs so we can stay up, I don't know.
That's okay, and so you like it here?
Yeah.
Okay.
I like it.
You like it too, Kaleigh?
I like the moon.
The moon, okay, Kayden?
Um, it's given us more space for Alexa, this one right here, for, uh, so that we can work with her. The, the babies share a room, so we have more space for their toys and we can work with her and for her calls and stuff.
And what about you, what's it done for you?
Uh, me and Aaliyah are the only ones who share a room now, so it's given us a lot more space and I like, I like living here.
And you like this home?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, my name is Kevin, um, this is my wife, Alicia. Um, as you saw, we have five kids, um, and really just, I just wanted to talk about what this program has done for us and our family. Um, last year, we found ourselves in a bit of a hardship and, um, uh, I, for a time, I was out of work and, you know, obviously, the, the ripple effect of that was, uh, it was just very hard for us to stay in our apartment, um, as you know, the Silicon Valley is extremely expensive. Um, so we just, there was no way we were able to, to be able to have our own place. So, uh, being in this program, it's allowed us to have our own place again. Um, you know, honestly, it's just helped us with just our, uh, our mental health and, um, you know, for a time, it wa- it was really rough and, you know, uh, depression starts to set in and things like that, so just our mood, our, our mental health has just increased so much. The morale in our home with our children, it's just awesome. Um, it's allowed us to just kind of get back on our feet and, um, help us to pay down, uh, our debt. We're actually saving money now, it's been, uh, it's been able to put us in a position to, um, hopefully buy a home pretty soon. Um, and, you know, in addition to that, just working with Tesla and, um, and Donnie, they've actually helped us, they've given us advice on, uh, ways to incre- increase our credit score to be able to buy a home. Uh, they, you know, gave us access to all kinds of different programs that have helped us, a lot of resources, that's right. Um, so really, honestly, this, you know, it, this program was an answered prayer.
It was a huge blessing.
Yeah, we were just in a really rough spot and without this program, I don't know where we would have been, so, um, just knowing that this program could possibly go away and not help other families the way it really helped and blessed us, um, you know, we just want to advocate to, to keep this program, uh, going just because I know firsthand experience, you know, that this program has been great for our family.
It's invaluable, it's really, we, I don't know where we would be without it.
Love you, Dad.
Yeah, so, yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, I'm just reorient, reorienting myself here.
Those were great videos, thank you.
Yeah.
And they're very touching videos and, and it just shows how much the programs are helping, so thank you for, for sharing that with us.
Yeah, thank you for letting us share them, appreciate it. Um, a- as I mentioned earlier, our TIBRA program benefited forty-six households in the last program year, including over one hundred children in the last year. So, our, our team has really had the privilege to hear many of similar stories to these over the past year. Um, slide thirteen, please.
Just a moment, Jonathan, they're pulling this slide back up.
Okay, sorry about that. There we go. So, uh, aside from the CAPER, I wanted to just touch briefly on the two substantial amendments that we're recommending tonight. Our citizen participation plan requires us to amend our consolidated plan and annual action plan for changes greater than twenty-five thousand dollars. In total, the city received just over one-point-six million dollars from CARES Act, CDGB COVID response, um, activities. Those funds were received after the a- annual action plan and consolidated plan were approved in May. And so although these changes were expected and planned for, the amounts were significant enough for us to, uh, to necessitate a substantial amendment to both of our plans. Slide fourteen, please. And finally, um, just a quick note about our COVID response funds. So, as I mentioned, the city received one-point-six million of COVID relief funds. We use those funds to develop an emergency rental assistance program with program assistance from Bill Wilson Center. So, it, you know, conceptually, the TIBRA program is really meant for people who are, are basically homeless already, trying to get them back into, uh, housing for up to, up to twenty-four months and transition back into permanent housing. Whereas the rent assistance program was really addressed to, uh, as a homeless prevention program, so people who already, you know, have housing, stable housing and, um, just due to coronavirus and impact of income, um, you know, we're at risk of losing that housing and so the rent assistance is a stopgap to keep people housed. In Phase One, we assisted households at sixty percent AMI, which for a family of four comes out to about eighty-four thousand dollars. We dispersed, um, roughly four hundred thousand dollars to eighty-seven households. We're currently in the middle of Phase Two, um, where we're assisting households up to eighty percent AMI and so for, for a family of four, it's just, uh, just around a hundred and twelve thousand. Um, and we're estimating to disperse around seven hundred and fifty thousand to, uh, to roughly two hundred households in Phase Two. Slide fifteen, please. In conclusion, staff's recommendation tonight is to approve the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty CAPER, um, and the substantial amendments to both the CON Plan and the action plan to execute these documents and submit them to HUD, um, by the December thirty-first, um, deadline and finally, to approve the related budget amendments. That concludes our presentation and staff is available for questions.
Um, Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Hardy, you have a question?
No, I was ready to make a motion on the recommendation and thank staff for putting five cute little faces on a wonderful program.
Um, Vice Mayor Hardy, the first, let, let me ask for any, any public members, it's a public hearing, so the first would be-
Oh, that's right. Not a worry.
Hearing, so I'll come, I'll come back to you. Is there any members of the public that would like to speak on this issue?
No members of the public have their hand raised.
Okay, so Council, Vice Mayor Hardy, and then I'll go down through the council. Would you like to move to close the public hearing?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second to close the public hearing, let's do that first. Assistant City Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Watanabe?
Yes.
Councilmember Chahal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Councilmember Park?
Yes.
Councilmember Jane?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. And that passes unanimously. Okay, Vice Mayor Hardy, I'll let you go first, followed by Watanabe and then Becker.
Yes, I just wasn't certain how, how much the city count, uh, the council wants us to read of this, uh, the attorney, but the recommendation is to hold the public hearing and approve the consolidated, um, annual performance and evaluation report. But the attachment, the consolidated plan for twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-five, the twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one annual action plan authorized the city manager to execute documents for submission to HUD uh, by December thirty-first and approve the related budget amendment in the Housing, Urban Development to recognize the CDGB, uh, coronavirus funds that were, um, in the amount of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-four and the grant funds in the amount of a hundred and thirty-nine, three hundred and eighty-four amount towards the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. I hope that was clear enough.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on that. Uh, thank you- Okay, we have a motion and a second on that, uh thank you, Vice Mayor Hardy, uh Councilmember Watanabe.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor, uh I had um eh uh if somebody didn't make the motion, I wanted, uh I was hoping to second it. And uh also, um just thank Jonathan uh Veach for, you know, this most excellent report, um just constantly amazed and. Just so grateful, you know, for what our city uh has been able to do in terms of, you know, providing um housing. You know, for uh vulnerable families and uh and those in need right now, so um thank you so much, Jonathan, for all your hard work, I know your heart. Goes uh a a lot into into this work and and it shows by um uh what what you produce uh as a result, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Watanabe, I totally agree with you there, Councilmember Becker.
Um, I have to say, those are very heartwarming videos, um something to give us a smile in these really dark times, so I really appreciate that, and as a renter. Uh, this really hits close to home, and uh I thank you guys for this, and uh I'm happy to be behind this.
Thank you, Councilmember Shahal.
Thank you, Mayor, uh thank you, Jonathan, Veach for the report and uh it's a great videos and great report. And I do appreciate the all the funds being utilized for the community, uh our community, especially at this time when we are. Facing this pandemic and so many people have lost their jobs, all these programs are really helping us out and it means. It may means a lot to whosoever making use of these programs. This is wonderful, and especially our rental assistance program, which has been funded by COVID funds, that's eh great. I do have one uh question, though, uh do we have any emergency uh funds? Because time and again, I have came into instances when people come, oh, we just got laid off and. We don't have any money, we need temporary uh uh assistance for a couple of months. Because our rental assistance program had a date bound, like we have invite application, then it gets cut off. And uh I know that one instance we came and then I referred to them to homelessness prevention system. Do we have anything like that within these parameters where we can uh make use of those emergency funds to help these people for temporary assistance?
Yeah, thank, thank you for the the question, Councilmember, um the the way this program is set up, the the money goes directly to landlords. And part of that is is tied to the restrictions of HUD and how we have to use the funds, so so this money is strictly um reserved for rental assistance. And so um there are other programs, I know that Destination Home had a county program where. Um, some of those funds were used for financial assistance, so it could be used for groceries or healthcare or other types of issues, these funds are strictly for um. For rent assistance, and so they go directly to the landlords and a- at least the way this program is designed, it's it's not available for other types of uses.
Oh, no, I'm I'm sorry if I was not clear, I I mean to say temporary emergency rental assistance. Uh, for people, I'm not asking for other, yeah, I should have been very clear. Uh, let's say somebody's, you know, on verge of getting homelessness because he cannot pay his rent. Only for two months, three months, and he cannot apply for any other program, do we have something for them in this program?
Yeah, there's still funds available, so we're still, we're still working, um you know, we're still getting new clients that are new, you know, new new applicants that are coming into the program. Um, is is that your question, is is there still funds available for people who need help?
Eh that's, that can answer my question, like, are we, we are running that program through Bill Wilson Center, so. Can we, like, although the date cut off date has been already been over, but if there is an emergency, they can still apply to it?
They can, so if you go to the city website, um there's a an interest list, and so we're having people submit all of their information to the interest list. And then as as we're able to, as we work through applications, we 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 will reach out to people who are on the interest list, so we're still taking information. Um, and and we'll anticipate helping all of the people on the interest list as well.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Okay, is there any, uh Councilmember Watanabe?
Yes, uh one more question, um thank you, uh Jonathan, um. Uh, the applicants uh that are needing assistance, um does it make a difference if they are documented or undocumented, does that come up?
Good question, um no, is as long as the applicant has a a lease, a valid lease, and they can prove that they have arrears, we don't. Check for documentation or anything like that.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, so we have a motion and a second, uh I see no other hands, so thank you very much, Jonathan, for that report. Uh, Assistant City Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Watanabe.
Yes.
Councilmember Shahal.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hardy.
Yes.
Councilmember Park.
Yes.
Councilmember Jane.
Yes.
Councilmember Becker.
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore.
Yes. Thank you, and we beat the deadline here before the end of December, so that passes unanimously, thank you again, Jonathan, for the report. Okay, the next item is update on the city's interest to relocate the Santa Clara County Courthouse located at ten ninety-five Homestead Road, Santa Clara, California. Uh, I have a conflict here, my office is located right across the street from the courthouse, so I'm gonna ask Vice Mayor Hardy to please. Um, take over uh running this item for the meeting, Vice Mayor, are you ready?
I am ready.
All yours, I'm signing off.
Thank you, I'll let you do that. Um, before, I'm wondering, Councilmember Jane, did you have a question be before we have our report on this?
Yeah, um during the election, there was some concern about whether I had to recuse myself over matters over the downtown. And I would like to report to the public that on December fourteenth, I received a letter from the FPPC. And it's file number A twenty dash one twenty-six, and their conclusion is the following. Uh, to the question, does the act prohibit you as a council member from participating in discussions? And decisions of the city council related to the proposed precise plan for the downtown focus area? They, the conclusion is no, although you have a potential inter- conflict of interest. In governmental decisions concerning the proposed precise plan for the downtown focus area, given the proximity of your primary residence. To the focus area, the public generally exception applies and permits you to take part in the decisions. So I do not have to recuse myself of any discussions of the downtown, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jane, eh for uh bringing that up and making that very clear. Um, Councilmember Becker, is there a concern before we hear our report?
Yeah, I want to make sure um through city attorney um that there is no conflict of interest, um cuz I've been hearing that there might have been a conflict of interest that. Something I said during a campaign about this issue, that it could be a conflict of, eh I I'm wondering if, I just want to make sure from city attorney. If there is any conflict with that.
Councilwoman Doyle, can you?
I I I know, I I don't know of any, I mean, I I I don't know the the facts that you're talking about, so I just don't know. Um, so.
Okay, yeah, I I just made your.
It doesn't, it I can't imagine what it would be, but I I just don't know the facts that you're that you're referring to.
Uh, well, eh eh in a nutshell, in twenty seconds, um they ba- uh basically, I stated in a campaign uh pledge that I would. Move to try to get the courthouse or work a deal or even be a part of the negotiations. Um, I know that, you know, there's a part of being a candidate, and then there's also being a council member. I mean, making statements, you know, as a candidate, you could say something like, I'm gonna block out the sun or ban Christmas or something. Um, it's may not happen, but you know, as a candidate, you should, you kind of have that constitutional right, correct?
Yeah, it doesn't say, if that's, if that's what people are referring to, I don't think that's, that's something that would prevent you from from participating in this.
Excellent, well, thank you, appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Becker, okay, with that, we will have a report.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, there's no PowerPoint, this is just an update on the city's interest to relocate the Santa Clara County Courthouse. Um, just as way as background, on September first, the city council met. And um staff provided a summary of the city's request to the judicial council regarding the city's interest to relocate the courthouse. And in that report, there was a draft letter that was proposed to the council for consideration, it was dated September second. And the council had a robust discussion around the letter and the process. Um, in the letter, the city inquired whether the judicial council would be willing to discuss the moving of the courthouse from its location. In compliance with Government Code Section eleven zero one one. Um, after the conversation, the city council approved the letter and authorized me to send the letter to the judicial council, and that's attached in your packet. And um to uh it also authorized to have active discussions with the judicial council and return to the council later. Either to discuss a budget strategy or to report back, and so we are reporting back. Another attachment in your packet is the letter dated November twenty-fifth from the judicial council. Um, but um I just want to state that we did have a meeting on November eighteenth. Um, it was the city attorney, myself, and Manuel Pineda, the Assistant City Attorney. We met with the Assistant Chief Executive Officer and General Counsel of the Superior Court of California. And um we were able to express our interest and assess their general concerns and general questions. Um, in summary, the judicial council confirmed that it does not have an interest at this time in redeveloping the courthouse. And the letter provides that the judicial council has no intention or plans to declare the courthouse surplus to seek special or seek special. Legislative authority for its sale, they did also in the letter state that um beyond Government Code Section eleven zero one one. They also have an additional procedure under Government Code seven zero three nine one C. And um ultimately, in in the paragraph from the judicial council. On page two, it outlines the process for that additional government code, ultimately, both um both government codes and processes lead back to. The county having the first right of refusal, if the um if the court is to um determine that the facilities and the land. Are uh a surplus and worth disposing, after the county's right of first dis- disposal, then it is, um it can be offered. Um, otherwise, and so uh after receiving that letter, we did uh subsequently then receive. An email confirmation of the uh courthouse's confirmation of their position on December ninth. And so that's, that's where we are left, and um I just want to acknowledge, and and Manuel can add additional comment. That during the time between September second and um the meeting on November eighteenth, that we, this subject did not go dark. Manuel was very um deliberate and contacting the courthouse multiple times, sometimes multiple times throughout the week, making phone calls, sending emails. And what we learned is that through COVID, um the state, the state was on furlough, and so their their limit, their. Um, their work hours were limited, and in some cases, they were closed on Fridays. As well as um there were delays because of their remote working because of COVID, and so when we did finally. Get in contact and were able to make communications, as you can see from the date of our meeting to the date of a written document position, they acted very quickly. So Manuel, I don't know if you have any additional comments, but we can certainly answer any questions the council may have.
Um, uh, thank you, Deanna, uh no, no additional comments, but of course, happy to answer any questions as well.
Excellent, thank you so much, I just, I, because we're not in person, I did not get to ask. Uh, Council Doyle, should I open a public hearing because this is under public hearing, or is this accepting a report, I need clarification?
Uh. Um, thank you, uh Vice Mayor, no, it's, this is just a report, so there's no, there's no. Real action to be taken other than to note and file at this point, you can give some direction, but it's not, it's not a pub- a formal public hearing that you would have to um. Um, open or close a public hearing.
Thank you, that's what I thought, but I wanted to make certain I covered ourselves, all right, if I have any council questions, Councilmember Shahal, please.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, uh, thank you, staff, thank you, Deanna, for the report and uh doing all the due diligence on that. Uh, my only request is would contacting our uh assembly members and senators, legislatures would help in any way if we unexplored that angle?
Um, I, I, I don't think so, the uh this is, they they express in their letter, if if you, if on page two. That um, one, it's, there's two government codes that that allow for them that to make their decision, but they do express. That they aren't interested, and I'm trying to find that sentence. Um, in any, in special, in authorizing legis- special legislation for the disposition of specific court facilities. And it not to be declared surplus.
Okay, okay, I was just trying if we have any way out like.
I was struggling to find that one sentence, and um it's on page two of the letter where they reference the um the authorizing legislation.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Shahal, Councilmember Becker, you have a question or comment?
Yeah, so um would, no, uh the, basically, they're saying no now. I remember years ago in two thousand, what, five, I would say, I was about twenty years old, they were saying, oh. Santa Clara is never gonna get Levi's Stadium, and I thought, yeah, Santa Clara is never gonna get Levi's Stadium, well, two, ten years later, we got Levi's Stadium. People are saying now, we're never gonna have a downtown, this courthouse, you know, will never be moved. Ten years from now, is that a, I mean, are they stating that in ten years from now, they're not even interested, or? Could this be revisited down the road to kind of not break the the heart of the group behind this, but to give them kind of. It may not happen today, it may not happen tomorrow, but maybe it's gonna happen in the future, it's just, it's not determined yet, or it it it, do we still have an open door?
I'll let um the city manager answer that, but but my uh my understanding is that is the answer right now.
Yeah, and and the the good thing is, is you can keep asking and they can always say no, I think we've all. Learned that in in life is that you can ask and, you know, the answer is what it is, and you can still ask again, um but. Um, I do think, though, that um we will want to analyze internally in terms of. Long-term land use and the specific plan and um approaches that we can take flexibly. Um, in the event that the court makes a determination um in the future that it no longer wants to be cited in that location. So that is work that we'll need to discuss internally and uh make additional determination so that we allow for maximum uh development flexibility, but. Um, for now, in terms of what we received from the letter, we can, we can just add to to our um downtown uh work. List is that to frequently check in and and maintain the relationship and conversations.
Yeah, and I, if I, if I may add something to that as well, I just want to remind the council, and this is Manuel Pineda. That the downtown task force continues to do its work, uh working towards a preferred land use plan, actually, the next meeting is tomorrow, so uh we'll have another meeting tomorrow. And this piece of property, although um this piece of property will continue to be plant, part of that plan. Uh, I think the task force uh has had good discussions about uh certain properties are gonna take longer to develop. But they want to have a master plan as part of the vision, uh and will continue to do that, working with them, uh staff. Uh, at least from a land use planning perspective, understanding that uh some properties uh could take longer than others, or uh you know, we don't know, as as Councilmember Becker said. Uh, what might change in ten years, but this property will continue to be part of that, that land use planning process.
That, that's great, and I'm glad to hear that, because then it's not forgotten and the, that, you know, the door's not closed, and that's what I'm, I'm, I'm happy to hear, so.
It's, the answer is not now.
Yeah.
Thank you, do I have, then I would need to, if there, I see no other questions, I've seen no hands raised for attendees. Um, do I have a motion just to note and file the the response? Uh, Deanna, I'm sorry, was there a suggestion other than that?
That, that's fine, thank you so much.
Vice Chair Hardy.
Okay, yeah.
I have one public comment.
Oh, okay, thank you, please.
Um, it reads, my name is Dawn, Dan Andresak, and I'm co-chair of reclaiming our downtown. Our group would like to congratulate Councilmember Watanabe for her reelection and congratulate and welcome Councilmembers Jane, Becker and Park. Our group looks forward to working closely with all, all of you over these next two years and beyond, when the idea of a letter was first. When the idea of a letter was first suggested, we knew that this would be the outcome. It's unfortunate with the resources and talent of both city staff and city management. We were hoping that the city would come forward with solutions surrounding this issue and not a letter. That said, our group and other citizens groups have been hard at work addressing solutions that we strongly feel will have the positive outcome we have envisioned when we first brought this before council in August of 2019. Please stand by as we will need the help of proactive council and staff to make this a reality for our new downtown. More to come. Thank you. End of comment."
Well, that's a bright light there, and I appreciate that so much. So did I hear a motion then to note and file the response to our letter?
Yes.
That was from Councilmember Becker. Councilmember Park?
I will second the motion, but at the same time, I'd like to make a comment, which is, hearing Mr... I don't know if I can make a comment, but...
Please, go ahead.
So I hear what Mr. Andresak says, and I thank him very much for his well wishes. And at the same time, I mean, I come from company and startup background, and I know one thing, which is, if you like a customer, sorry, if you don't like a customer, you simply do what they pay you to do. You simply do what they ask you, but if you like the customer, in this case, our customer is our residents, then we give them a solution. And I think that it's very important for us to hear what the people are asking and to translate that into an action which gives them what they actually want, which is, in one case, we understand that the idea is they want to move the courthouse, but the real solution that they really want is they want to know, how do we make way, how do we make plans for downtown? And I think that it is very important that we don't just do the one thing that's being requested, but we look beyond the request and give the residents a solution, which is, what are we trying to accomplish here? We're trying to accomplish finding a way to either revitalize the downtown, you know, find ways that we can, you know, make a benefit for the city. And that's why I feel like, rather than having just simple letters, maybe we can go a little bit beyond that. If we can ask ourselves in our daily work, can we do better than that? To get the residents, to get our hour, you know, we're their servants, to give the people what they need. Maybe we can think just beyond the one action that's, you know, that we think we can do, and try to work towards a solution which gives the city what it wants, and that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Park. Do I have any? I don't see any other comments. Nora, we're fine. We don't have any other comments from public?
I do not have any other comments.
Thank you so much. Then I will call for the question, please. Assistant City Clerk?
Councilmember Watanabe.
Yes.
Councilmember Chahal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Councilmember Park?
Yes.
Councilmember Jane?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, and that does pass unanimously with the mayor recusing herself. That we... I think we can get the mayor back on. If she's back there, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for handling that issue.
Of course.
All right. Next, we have reports of members and special committees. Do we have any council members that would like to make a report? Councilmember Becker? Councilmember Becker?
Sorry about that. Is this the moment where we are able to say a tiny announcement within a couple of minutes?
Yeah, within very short couple of minutes, yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Our staff is here. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So I wanted to say, first off, to my fellow council members, have a very happy holidays and stay safe and be with your families, and I hope to see you all next year to do good things. And I want to say happy, you know, holidays also to my community, and wish you all the best of luck in the next year, and thank you for all being here. And thank you, staff.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hardy.
Yes, I just wanted to report that the B-PAC did meet, a nice, long, seven-hour meeting. We have suggested two more members for B-PAC that will be coming to you, and we have instituted for our workspace, for our work plan, what we did was a ranked choice voting, which went very well, so we were able to bubble up those things that are most important to the committee to the top of the list. And that ranked choice voting is working pretty well. Thank you.
Thank you for the progress you're making to Vice Mayor Hardy there. Councilmember Chahal?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to pass my greetings for the happy holidays and wish everyone stay safe, stay healthy, and hope, I'm really, really, really hoping that 2021 would be much better than 2020, and thank the community for dealing with the 2020 pandemic, and thank all my colleagues and the staff over here, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Watanabe.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to just report on a couple of meetings that I've had this week. It seems like it's been a busy week, but today I attended the Recycling and Waste Reduction Commission meeting, and one of the reports that was given relates to Senate Bill 1383, which is going to have some serious implications in how we dispose of organic waste in the coming year. And so I reached out to Dave Staub, Deputy Director of Public Works, to sit down and talk about how this could potentially impact the city. And then I still continue my work with the Santa Clara-Stana Cruz Roundtable Legislative Task Force met also today, and taking action and preparing papers regarding health and environmental issues that impact communities. And so anyway, it'd be nice, looking forward to getting a break for, I'm sure all of us feel the same way. And I just want to say thank you to our staff for their hard work over this past year. We've accomplished so much as a city, and our community has benefited in so many ways as a result. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to the new council, and looking forward to also 2021, and just keep moving ahead and staying positive and working through this pandemic. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Watanabe. City Manager, Director?
I do have a couple of reports out. First, I just want to call your attention to the tentative meeting agenda calendar, which is in the packet. It's published for every meeting, and it shows all of the items that we are already planning for on specific council dates. You're always welcome to invite us to, or we can invite you to a briefing if you feel there's an information session that's needed. I also want to call your attention, this is a scrolling, the next item is a scrolling list of council and stadium authority referrals, where we track the dates and the referral that the council issued the directives and when we've closed them. And so we're going to close out this year with about 70 referrals, of which we carry forward 21. And we are going to end 2020 with some good news, and so let me just share if I can. We had Comic-Con virtually on Saturday, and I had the opportunity to mention briefly a couple of times that Storytime with Queen Elsa was a hit, and it had tens of thousands of viewers, and I just wanted to share how far our reach is with respect to our City of Santa Clara programs. During the Storytime with Queen Elsa, we had people represented from the countries of Mexico, India, Hong Kong, Serbia, Lithuania, Scotland, and the UK, and many more. And we were able to grow through our city's YouTube channel from 700 subscribers to 3,300 subscribers, and Elsa was watched 55,527 times between Zoom and YouTube. And we are closing out this year with, on Tuesday, we learned that our metropolitan area between Santa Clara, San Jose, and Sunnyvale has been ranked number two amongst the top 30 nationwide. And there's a new study that has come out in terms of ranking the top 30 metropolitan areas for purposes of economic performance before and during the pandemic, as well as our programs and assistance. I'm losing my voice, but I just wanted to share that good news.
Thank you, Deanna. I know we have a lot to be proud of, so thank you. You've been a big part of it for us too, and our whole staff. We do appreciate it. All right, so let's see. Now we move on to our adjournment, and I have, if you'll bear with me, several people to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of. The first, I'd like to ask the council to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Paul Carney, former police officer with the Santa Clara Police Department and a Santa Clara resident. Paul Carney was born in Pennsylvania, the youngest of seven children. He had multiple college scholarships for football, and attended Kent State University and went on to play semi-professional football. Paul served in the United States Marine Corps for three tours in the Korean War. Paul served as a police officer for the Santa Clara Police Department from 1959 until his retirement in 1982. Paul passed away on October 25th, 2020, and he will be dearly missed by his family and his loved ones. Also, I'd like to ask we adjourn in memory of David Robert Parker, former hazardous materials specialist with the Santa Clara Fire Department. Dave Robert, we knew him as Dave Parker, was born in Minneapolis, Minnesota, to Robert and Doris Halverson Parker. Dave fondly recalled childhood years in the Midwest as a Norman Rockwell experience. His love of science was born watching his father work in the foremost laboratory. At age 15, he relocated with his family to Millbrae, California, where Dave participated in basketball, tennis, and track and field at Capaccino High School, and he was an active member of the Methodist Youth Fellowship. Dave received his BS in Chemistry in 1968 from UC Davis. In 1970, while pursuing his master's degree at San Jose State University, Dave began six years as a medic in the Army Reserves and married his first wife Cheryl, who predeceased him in 1999. In 1976, Dave completed his PhD in Chemistry at UC Davis, began work in research and development at Clorox, and welcomed his first son, Christopher. The family moved to San Jose in 1979, where his second son Jeffrey was born in 1982. In 1983, a small advertisement in the newspaper led Dave to his career with the City of Santa Clara Fire Department, where he was chosen to lead the Hazardous Materials Division. This innovative organizational model was the first of its kind in the United States and was eventually emulated by cities, counties, and states across the country. Dave wrote new codes and ordinances, assisted in the design of chemical distribution and processing systems, trained firefighters to safely deal with the new dangers that had never been encountered, recruited additional chemists and scientists who would become hazardous material specialists for Santa Clara. He also worked with other agencies to develop specialized response teams and mutual assistance protocols, and he even wrote design specifications for hazardous material response vehicles, equipment that had never been built before. Dave and his team provided 24/7 response to support firefighters. Dave also served as the Public Information Officer at multiple fire scenes, where his calm demeanor, as well as articulate and helpful explanations, provided professional and reassuring information to the community. Dave embodied the value of a true servant leader. He approached all he did as service to others. He was a faithful member of Campbell United Methodist Church, where his volunteerism included Sunday School teacher and chair of the church council. He served on the Santa Clara Methodist Retirement Foundation Board several times during his life, and he was an active member in the Silicon Valley section of the American Chemical Society for decades, where he served on the executive committee and was twice elected chair. Dave was always enthusiastic regarding young people's pursuits and enjoyed serving as both the school science fair judge and proctor for the annual high school chemistry Olympiad. In 2003, David married his wife Carol Ann and welcomed Nancy, Chrissy, and Jenny, always loving referring to them as our daughters. In Dave's retirement in 2012, he and Carol Ann enjoyed traveling together, both in the United States and around the world. He was a genuinely kind and modest person with an inquiring mind and a great, sometimes mischievous sense of humor. He was a good listener and enjoyed long discussions with friends and family, frequently forgetting time and place while engaging with others. He was a loving husband, whose trips to Costco would frequently include the purchase of red roses for Carol Ann. He was always there to applaud, support, and comfort. Dave's sons remember him as their devoted father, as one whose family always came first. Each evening, he would be home in time for the family dinner and usually cooked it. Dave was a constant presence on the sidelines of his son's games with words of encouragement, actively helped in the church youth groups, shared carpool duty, and would drive on school field trips. And he was a doting grandfather who enjoyed observing and interacting with his six grandchildren. David Robert Parker passed away peacefully at home on November 2nd, 2020. David survived by his wife Carol Ann, children Christopher, Christina, with Christina, Jeffrey, and Allison, Nancy, Chrissy, Jose, Jenny, and grandchildren Alex, May, Kai, Oliver, Dylan, and Violetta. He is also survived by Sister Sally, Brother Wayne, Tammy, as well as nephews, nieces, and extended family. And I want to say something about Dave Parker. He changed the way we looked at hazardous waste here in the city of Santa Clara, and just was, he just broke new ground. He was an amazing creator of what our program is today, and we have so much to be thankful for and grateful for Dave Parker. He changed the way we handle hazardous waste materials in the city. He left his mark on Santa Clara. Lastly, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Paul Giannini, former police officer with the Santa Clara Police Department. Paul Giannini was born in San Jose, California, on May 11th, 1939, to Aletta and Joseph Ferrero. He graduated from Bellarmine Catholic High School in San Jose and obtained a degree in Criminal Justice Administration from San Jose State University. After joining the US Army, he served in the Army National Guard for several years. He was a police officer, detective, and sergeant with the Santa Clara Police Department from 1962 to 1992, and retired after 30 years of dedicated service to his community. An avid golfer, Paul served on the Board of Director of the Men's Club at the club at Arrow Creek and was active in local Porsche clubs. Paul and Nancy celebrated their 50th wedding anniversary in 2018. Paul passed away peacefully at home on November 25th, 2020, surrounded by his family. He is survived by his wife Nancy Giannini of Reno, Nevada, son Paul Joseph Giannini II of Reno, Nevada, daughter Jennifer Walker and her husband Jack Walker of Livermore, California, brother Dante Giannini of San Jose, California, and sister Martha Giannini of Santa Clara, California. And he was such a fine gentleman. So could I please have a motion to adjourn in memory of these three people who had such a big part in our city of Santa Clara, and they were staff here at our city of Santa Clara and left their marks here? May I please have a motion?
I'll motion.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Becker. I think, was that a second by Councilmember Park?
Sure, yes.
Okay, Assistant City Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Watanabe?
Yes.
Councilmember Chahal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Councilmember Park?
Yes.
Councilmember Jane?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. So thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful, safe, and healthy holiday. We'll see you all back in January together, and this meeting is adjourned.